Oh, beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountain majesty above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood from sea to shining sea. Oh, beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountain majesty above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood from sea to shining sea.
Good morning, it's nine o'clock, we're asking everybody to stand so we can get started for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, let me note, for the record, there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the north wall of legislative chambers here. Anybody that does have a phone, we ask you to please silence them or put them on, turn them off or put them on mute. Also, there's an automatic defibrillator in the black of the room in case somebody needs that for any manner. And also, note of decorum. This is definitely an atmosphere where you're free to exercise your right to advocate to your elected bodies, but I ask everybody to show decorum when they're here at the mic and respect the orders that are there. At no time should you come to this dais without direction. If you have anything to give, you should give it to the clerk. So with that, we will call to order the Board of Equalization, roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board Equalization Meeting held Tuesday, September 18th, 2018. Item B, call for a meeting set Tuesday, October 2nd, 2018 as a day for hearing on certified assessment corrections. What's the will of the board?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
It's a weekly reminder, Commissioner Boyle's vote will not appear on the screen. Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related items. Not officially listed on the agenda, are there any citizens' comments? Say none. We'll move on to resolutions, item D, E, F, and G. What's the will of the board?
Motion two for...
End adjourned.
End adjourned.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kraft, second by Commissioner Duda, to approve motions D, E, F, G, and adjourned. Please vote.
Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.
We're now called to order the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority, roll call please.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is approval of the minutes of the Noxious Weed Control Authority Meeting held on Tuesday, August 28th, 2018. What's the will of the board?
Motion two for...
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kraft, second by Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.
Item two, citizens' comments, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on noxious weed control authority items that are not listed on the agenda, any citizens' comments? None. Item three is a resolution placing a special assessment on the property in Douglas County. Mike, do you have anything to say? There's a motion to approve item three and adjourn it. You got anything you need to say? Okay. Please vote.
Commissioner Rogers, while people are voting, who made the second?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.
We will call now the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting to order, roll call please.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one, minutes and claims. Letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners Meeting held Tuesday, September 18th, 2018. Letter B is approval of the claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, September 25th, 2018. What's the will of the board?
Move. Approve.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Kraft, please vote.
Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.
Item two is the consent agenda. Let me note that item F1, there is a correction in the number. The SID number noted on that should be 582 and not 561. Again, the SID number on item F1 in the consent agenda should be number 582 and not 561. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Kraft, to approve the consent agenda with that change. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.
We will come back to citizens' comments, where now we'll go to item five and presentations. And letter A is the presentation of the four Douglas County Foundations, Commissioner Duda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I know we have a lot of business and we'll try to be brief, but this is something I'm really excited about, it's something we've been talking about for years, and finally this year we're going to make it happen. Within the Douglas County family, there are four active foundations at work. This year, when we do the United Way pledge drive with our employees, which is coming up within the next week or so, what I dream of is that alongside of United Way, and I don't want to take away from them, they do a lot of great work, but we do have four foundations of our own. And I would like for employees, if an employee chooses to share through payroll deduction with any of these foundations, I would like them to have the opportunity to consider one of the county's four foundations as well. We made a little flyer here to hand out, and I've asked representatives of some of the foundations if they would just very briefly tell us what they do. I have invited Vernon Waldron with Friends of Extension, come on down Vernon. Marty Christensen is here with the Community Mental Health Center Foundation. I'm not sure if anybody came down with the Deputy Sheriff's Foundation or not, and I'm here as well as Commissioner Kavanaugh from the, and Clerk Ash from the Health Center Foundation. So we hope to post these flyers around the county with the United Way flyers. And I thought this would be a great opportunity just to briefly let the world know what our four foundations do. Vernon is our retired executive director of Extension and now works part-time. The Friends of Extension is the only one of the foundations that has a part-time staff person, and here he is. Good morning Vernon.
Good morning Commissioners, Vernon Waldron, Executive Director for Friends of Extension, Forage Foundation, and Douglas County Fair. The flyer you see is actually has all four foundations on there, and it has contact information, well, mission statement, contact information, and the accomplishments. Very, very quickly, Friends of Extension Foundation exists to support Extension in Douglas County. We work with the Extension Office, working with food safety, with nutrition, environmental safety, Forage Youth Development, and as you're all aware, we took on the Douglas County Fair this last year, which we were happy to do and we think it was a very good success. Just to give you preliminary, we are set for 2019, July 12th, 13th, 11, 12, 13, 14, same weekend as last year. So we're excited, Valley's Point was excited, and we already have it in their calendar and our calendar. So, thank you, and we enjoy working with you and with Extension Office.
Thank you Vernon, appreciate it. From the Community Mental Health Center Foundation, we have Marty Christensen.
Thank you, good morning Commissioners. I just wanted to just do a kind of a brief overview of what we do. Our foundation was founded in 2002 from a large donation from a family member that was pleased with the care that their family member received. The foundation's goal is really to help and assist our patients, our consumers, across the whole continuum. A lot of our money is spent on providing for those individuals who need help. For example, if an individual comes into the Omaha area, is not from here, and doesn't have the financial, excuse me, means to go home, we have often bought bus tickets or plane tickets to get them back to their home environment and their, the supportive community they came from. We also help our consumers, we've had situations where individuals are in financial straits and can't afford to pay their utilities, we've paid utilities for people. If they need new glasses and don't have funding, we've purchased eyeglasses. A big part of what we do is we provide co-pays for the medications that our patients get from our providers. And we engage in some fundraising, our biggest activity is Omaha Gives, we participate in that. We also do a cheesecake sale once a year, and the money from that all goes to the the co-pays for our outpatient clinics. We also provide for our staff a means to try to maintain a positive work environment. We have a snack shack that's up on the fifth floor that all employees are welcome to come and purchase, and any profit we make from that, it goes back into our foundation. So I like this opportunity to let you know a little bit about us, thank you so much.
Thank you Marty, appreciate what you do. Is there anybody here from the Deputy Sheriff's Foundation? They weren't sure if they were going to be able to send somebody or not. I didn't realize they existed until they were on the news recently donating some tourniquets to the deputies out in the field, and so I looked into it a little bit more. They do the, well, we have a description of the mission statement of all four of these foundations. The last one is the Douglas County Health Center Foundation, which focuses on the long-term care out there. Commissioner Kavanaugh, Clerk Ash, and myself serve on that one. We do employee, we give nursing scholarships out to anybody wishing to further their foundation in nursing. But primarily, we're there for enhancing the lives of the residents. We've recently purchased about forty recliner chairs that are scattered throughout the facility. On the last round of Omaha Gives, we've dedicated that to an EC aquarium for one of our dementia wings. We have two dementia wings out there, and we put one of these in, it's a, it looks like a saltwater aquarium, and you can sit there looking at it all day and you really do, and our public properties did a wonderful job of installing this, so it looks so realistic and it was so great. We're doing it again, we're doing it on the other dementia wing as well. So, did you wish to?
Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk and member of the Health Center Foundation. I just wanted to briefly explain to the employees on how they can...
Thank you, please do.
So, first of all, anybody can donate to any of these foundations, you don't have to be an employee, but you can donate via payroll deduction if you're a county employee. And so, either this Friday or Monday, or Monday, October 1st, we're going to send out a payroll deduction form, and you can choose any one of the four foundations. You can donate to all four of them, it's just a minimum of $1 that you need to deduct if you want, if you wish to do a payroll deduction donation to any of these four foundations. And it's, it happens every, so it's every pay period. And it's just, like I said, a dollar minimum each pay period. And we'll send these out to each employee via email, and then I'll reach out to the different department heads and elected officials and ask them to let me know if they have employees that are, don't have county email addresses, and I can provide hard copies of the payroll authorization deduction form, payroll deduction authorization form if anyone wants them. So, yeah, by this Friday, September 28th, or Monday, October 1st, the majority of county employees will have an email with, it'll have this flyer that explains the mission statement and the recent accomplishments of each foundation, and then a payroll deduction authorization form that an employee can fill out and return to the payroll division of the clerk's office.
Thank you Dan. Dan, of course, the clerk's office does payroll, but Dan has just been bending over backwards to be as helpful as possible on this whole process. This is the first year we've done this, and so we're kind of feeling our way along in terms of trying to be up with United Way. And so, we aren't exactly sure of all the details of how we do this, but we're excited to be moving forward with it. So, I thank you for all of your help, Dan, in making this happen.
I'm very impressed, and I want to thank Commissioner Duda. I think he's the guy that did this, moving this all along. It's very impressive Claire, and I really am happy to see you do this because this really springs all these foundations to life, and it's a really great way for all of us to contribute easily. And all the other, and I know Dan Ash, you said about what he does, he absolutely does, day in and day out. So I appreciate the kind of cooperation that we have, and especially your leadership on this issue. So thanks a lot Claire, I appreciate it.
Thank you, with that, we'll, oh, I'm sorry, there's no light. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I wanted to join in the sentiments expressed by my colleague Commissioner Boyle on the many, many years of hard work that Claire and his wife Gail have devoted to the Douglas County Health Center Foundation. Douglas County Health Center, in my opinion, is the best thing that Douglas County government does. And it goes largely unrecognized, and even more unrecognized is the great additional benefits that are provided to that great five-star CMS organization by the foundation, led by the Dudas for many, many years. I also want to point out that the Fall Festival of the Douglas County Health Center is coming up, and do you know the date offhand?
October 12th.
October 12th, and I would highly recommend that you stop by, there's food, there's silent auction, and I believe all the proceeds go to the Health Center. And, you know, the things that have been done there by the foundation over the years are things that we can't do through the regular budget process, and they include the construction and maintenance of the chapel, the easy chairs that Commissioner Duda pointed out, the aquariums, and many, many, many other things. There's a little list on here, on the extended version of the handout. Music and memory, a therapy program for folks, we provided them with music players that they can sit and listen to, welcome baskets for all new long-term care residents. And comfort cart provided for families whose resident loved one is nearing their end. We do excellent hospice care, end-of-life care at the Health Center, and daily subscription to the Omaha World Herald subsidized by the foundation. So, those are just some of the benefits that would not be provided to our residents without the hard work of the foundation led by Commissioner Duda, so thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, real quick, the Fall Feast is actually Thursday, October 11th from, I believe, four to seven, but it is, it's Thursday, October 11th.
Great, thank you.
At the Health Center on 42nd and Woolworth, right?
Yep. With that, we'll go into, we're going to go to item number six, which is public hearings. We should be able to get through this in ten to fifteen minutes, and after that, we'll have substantial time to get into the juvenile justice debate. So Kent, if you want to give the update. Item A, adoption of the Douglas County Comprehensive Development Plan.
Good morning Commissioners, Kent Home Environmental Services Director. I am somewhat pinch hitting for Doug today, and we're going to try this on the iPad today, so, hold on. So, just a little bit of background, the comprehensive plan is generally updated about once every ten years. It was last updated in 2006. We've been working with our consultant RDG on the update, done a number of public outreach things, public input with some stakeholder groups. And the County Planning Commission has heard this over a couple of different meetings, recommended some different changes and suggestions. And I'm here to present you with the final draft. And with that, I first wanted to point out what really hasn't changed with the plan. And there's really two things, two main things. One, the conservation design mandate for new development really proposes to preserve open space, preserve natural resources, and to facilitate good stormwater design using low-impact development and green infrastructure, which is all very conducive and consistent with what this board has wanted all along in terms of stormwater policy and procedure and rules and regulations. The other piece of this is that all new development of any density consequences needs to be serviced by municipal services and not individual services. So this just means that they need to connect in with the municipal sewer system provided by the city of Omaha, and have municipal water sources. Some of the things that are new in the updated plan, we have upped the density requirements in the area shown here in kind of the upper right. That is designed to hook in eventually to the Omaha Interceptor Sewer System. That particular area can be sewed, and so we're looking at that as being definitely high-density development and supportive of transit. The thing that kind of comes along with that is that, and also consistent with what is in the comprehensive plan, is it provides more potential housing choices for folks, particularly those perhaps on the lower income end of the bracket, and just provides more comprehensive development, and also that's orderly and next to existing development. The other big change is in the ag and floodplain zoning, where we're proposing to move the minimum lot size from one unit per 20 acres to one unit per 80 acres. And this is simply to help discourage kind of the breaking up of parcels in the ag zone, and particularly in the floodplain areas. We don't need additional buildings and stuff in floodplains, and a lot of the county's jurisdiction is in that floodplain area, in those two particular areas, north and south of valley. We did make kind of a modification to the municipal water and sewer provisions, and that is in the ag and floodplain zones that, and particularly around resource extraction areas, if there were to be development there. We still want to see centralized water and sewer, not necessarily connected to a municipal system initially, but a centralized system so that we don't have a lot of septic and individual wells, because there, especially in the floodplain, there are some concerns, especially from the NRD, their groundwater protection things that are in place now. We just need to be cognizant of that, and so this is consistent there while allowing some flexibility for future development. One of the things that also is coming to age is this increased reliance or increased emphasis on waste reduction. A lot of companies now have that as kind of their corporate motto, is that they want to go towards what they're defining as zero waste and not throw as much in the landfill. Conversely, we obviously want landfill revenue to help offset property taxes, but we also see that there's this continuing trend towards waste reduction. So one of the things that we're trying to push for is local market development for recycled materials so that we can provide some additional economic development activities here. There's one thing with the American Plastic Recyclers Association where they're actually going and surveying Nebraska companies that process and manufacture plastic materials to see if we can get them to use additional recycled materials, and so that there's more of a demand there that can help offset some of the losses in revenue from the landfill. Local food production is another big emerging trend here that helps to address local food issues. There's a whole consortium of folks in the metropolitan area that are working on improving food availability to folks that need that. And you'd be surprised at the number of folks, the number of food deserts and things in the metropolitan area, and some of them are surprisingly in some areas that you would think would be pretty affluent. So it's very surprising. So there are things in the comprehensive plan policies that address this, that encourage this as a land use, and we'll have new definitions and use types for that. And finally, the one thing that we've kind of done with the Future Land Use Map is really to simplify it and try to eliminate some of the confusing colors in the 2006 version. So the one on the right is the one that we're dealing with, and, hold on a second here, let me get out of this, blow that up, so you can see that a little bit better. With that, those are my comments for today. Happy to entertain any questions, and with that, I'd ask for your approval of the updated plan.
Mr. Boyle.
Ken, first of all, I want to thank you for your leadership in bringing this, and also the planning board and all your staff and everyone involved. It's a, just a very good presentation, and it looks like a very good plan. One thing I'd like to ask you to kind of put in your head, and also the commissioners to kind of think about, something that I've thought about a lot over the years, and it's called a law that is called inclusionary zoning. And if you're not familiar with it, what it does is, it says, for example, that the, all of the development that takes place, for example, at 144th and Pacific and Dodge and all that, that when that takes place, the developer is required to give one-tenth of one percent or some such kind of amount of money to a local government, either the county or the city, wherever the development lies, for the purpose of building low-income housing. And the political subdivision, whether it's the city or the county, can then build it in that subdivision, or can use the funds to build it in other parts of the county or the city. It has been used in larger cities, and I had the opportunity to speak to the President of the California Real Estate Board at a national meeting, and he said that they did use inclusionary zoning, it worked well in San Francisco and LA, places like that. But he said, why do we penalize only the developers? So they put a vote to the people of San Francisco and in LA, and the vote was to fund affordable housing, and of course, in that part of the country, it was a $2 billion proposal, and it passed. And incidentally, there's another one that's being considered by Los Angeles right now, and that is for the homelessness problem, and it's another billion-dollar proposal. In any event, it's something that we could do here in the city and the county together to provide for low-income housing, and what we just saw recently with the project, the property on 34th and Lake, this is what's much needed, is a good, affordable, clean, decent housing, and this is one way to finance it. So I just suggest that, I don't know if the county could get in on that, but maybe we could. So, if you take a look at it, I'd appreciate it, and Marcos is our expert on that. Marcos could help a lot.
Okay, we'll look at that.
You've heard of that, I know, we've talked about it.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Well, thanks, and I really want to say how much I appreciate your efforts, you're doing a terrific job.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Seeing no further questions, we can't take action, what's the will of the board?
Motion two for...
Motion by Commissioner Kraft, second, we officially close the public hearing. The will of the board, motion to approve... The will of the board, motion to approve by Commissioner Craft, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes. All Commissioners voting yes.
Item B, public hearing and bond resolution to approve the issuance of, by the county of its tax-exempt revenue bonds to the benefits of Central High School's foundation. We'll now open the public hearing on that item.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Steve Likes with Q-Tech Rock Law Firm here in Omaha. Apologies if I'm looking a little wet. I think I finally dried off, but it's a little downpour this morning. I'm here today on behalf of the Central High School Foundation in connection with its request that the county board hold a public hearing and then adopt a bond resolution to issue a bond to help finance a really exciting project that the foundation is working with Omaha Public Schools and Central High School. With me today is Michelle Roberts, the Executive Director of the foundation, and Jake Holdenreid with First National Bank, who will be purchasing the bond. We had the privilege last week of appearing before you and talking about the project, which is a really exciting addition to the east side of Central High School for communications, library, arts, which will free up space within the existing high school for additional classrooms, for the largest high school in the state, and downtown Omaha's own high school, and my alma mater, which I'm very proud to say. We are here today because under the federal tax code and under state law, we're required to hold a public hearing before the bonds can be issued, and then after that, we will ask you to adopt a bond resolution on behalf of the foundation. And if there are any questions, again, Michelle and Jake are here to answer any questions anyone might have.
Seeing none, are there any comments from the public? We'll close the public hearing. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes. All Commissioners voting yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item seven, committee discussion and action. Item A is finance. Item one is the budget report, and I'm taking that as submitted. Okay. Okay, okay. Let me lay out some parameters here about how we're gonna proceed. We're gonna do item two and the items from letter C, one, two, and three, kind of in this fashion. I'm gonna ask the Douglas County Youth Center to give its report fifteen minutes, and under item two by Commissioner Boyle, I'm gonna ask an update on the project be given by Bruce Carpenter. Both of those gentlemen will have fifteen minutes. After that, because this topic has been heard continuously, I'm going to ask the board to allow for forty minutes of total discussion for the people that are pro the three resolutions, and then have forty minutes of discussion for people that are there. I'm not saying you use all the forty, but that's the maximum that we're gonna go. And because people here have commented before, I'm gonna ask, instead of the five, we give the three minutes, and then we'll proceed from there. And after that, after everybody has, after people have had the opportunity, within that hour and twenty-minute span, we will individually vote on each of those three items. So, and looking at the board, okay, everything's fine with that. So with that, and also in that discussion period, you get one bite at the apple. When you make your comment, that's it. So with that, Brad, I'm asking you all to go. Go from there. And for those that may not have been here at the beginning, let me know. At no time should you come toward this dais. If you have any information to give, you should give it to the clerk. Brad, please go.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brad Alexander, Douglas County Youth Center. Commissioner Rogers has asked that we do things a little bit differently this week, so there's not a PowerPoint presentation, so you're receiving the handouts. My focus, for my purpose, I actually almost get the day off today. I work through slide number nine, and then I'm going to introduce you to Dr. Matisson over here. Commissioner Borgeson had asked for some additional information about mental health, so he's gonna kind of walk you through the processes that we use at the youth center to provide the mental health services. And then Commissioner Rogers has asked that we present our expediting list. We got Greg Hepburn here who works for that reason, to expedite the young people, and we partnered with Heather Briggs from probation, and she's been fantastic. So I'll get to my piece, and then I'll introduce you to, again, to Dr. Matisson. So if we'll just, the handout, I'll just focus on slide number nine. Excuse me. So today, we've got seventy-six kids at the youth center. My understanding is that three are actually preparing to walk out the door this morning, so we'll drop to seventy-three. Generally, our population breaks up by gender, seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent. Lately, it's been seventeen percent females and eighty-three percent males. You can see that our average daily population from January one through the end of August of two thousand and eighteen is eighty-one, and I guess we could take a quick peek over at the average length of stay slide. I believe that's fourteen, slide number fourteen. Is that correct? I've got two different documents, so I apologize. Page twelve, thank you, slide number twelve. So it continues to hold at fifty, but that's a little bit deceiving. In August, again, you all know that the kids that are in adult court seem to really drive that number up, and we had an extremely high month for average length of stay for young people in adult court. I think it was one thirty-seven. So that skews that number significantly. So that's just kind of a nutshell on our population. We've got fifteen minutes, so I wanna make sure that Dr. Matisson has adequate time. So Jim is a psychologist. He's been with us for...
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years, yeah. And he comes from Cook County. He worked at the juvenile facility in Cook County previously, so he comes with a lot of experience and just really pleased with how they're managing the young people that have mental health issues and the assistance that they provide to them and the services, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Matisson.
Good morning. Thanks for having me today. I'd like to start with our intake process that we have at the youth center. When the detainees hit the front door, come into the youth center, we have an intake screen that they go through, and it's assessing for mental health, suicide risk, behavioral precautions, psychosis, anxiety, depression, substance use. And so from there, the persons are screened, and there's a computerized algorithm that will automatically tab them to be placed or referred to our program. We have an override, though. The individuals who are doing the intake then, through our training over the years, I've held mental health trainings, and they will then refer, they can override the system and then make a basic referral straight through that to the program. They will also be assessed by mental health by our team then, within typically twenty-four hours, and we include the MACI, which is a standard-held measure for assessing all different types of mental health. The medical team, Dr. LaCroix, Buffy Hastreiter, the nursing staff are also assessing as well. That's another source of referrals. I am so happy to have such good corrections officers to work with, to, they are on their toes, looking at the kids and kind of seeing exactly what's happening with them, so we have another sense of safety to refer the kids into the mental health program. It's kind of an ongoing process. Anybody really in the facility who works there can refer to us if they see something going on, and we appreciate that. We get a lot of referrals through teachers, probation officers, parents, they'll be calling, and so we have a lot of different layering systems to see the youth, which is helpful. Our team consists of myself, Barbie Steinkie, Shannon Calabrese, and then we have a new therapist coming on board, which is gonna be really exciting. She'll be joining us within the next week or two. We've really, I think that we really provide a lot of service. As you can see in the handouts, all the different crisis sessions, mental health sessions that we've been providing, it's ramped up. We have a lot of unique youth in our program. It's kind of evolved over the years. I think the big thing that Mr. LaFlore's really helped with in the program is our MDT meeting that we hold on Mondays. We are meeting with probation, the promiscip, DCYC Education, Mr. Hepburn, Mr. LaFlore, the mental health team, DCYC Medical, and we're coming together and formulating these cases and forwarding on information so we can try to expedite the youth and that they can be moving quicker to their next placement, and then kind of providing data as we're going along. We're seeing information that we may be hearing from probation or promiscip that we may find that we could help assess this even more further and make the placement even more robust or refined as we're going along, so passing that information along and making the transition better. Family Service, Heartland Family Service, I've been working with them, and then there's a couple other providers in the community. We're working to hastening the process of evaluating the youth more efficiently, and I appreciate Brad, Mark, and the team for helping me be there to help evaluate these kids and make the evaluation process go longer. We have some that are very difficult, and we have very few providers in the community for some of our kids, such as youth who are at risk for sex offense or serious conduct. And so those providers may take a little bit longer, but we've been kind of trying to work on that and improving that and making that faster. Does anybody have any questions, or?
Is it, Doctor?
Doctor.
Fiedler.
Matisson, yeah.
Mitchison?
Matisson. It looks like Matheson.
Thanks, that was informative. I have talked to a lot of people involved in the system and did some work there as a young lawyer myself, and I've come across kind of a repeated, I don't know if it's a request or complaint, observation, that children who are ordered to be evaluated by the courts, psychiatric evaluations by the courts, suffer very long periods waiting for that eval to occur. Are you aware of this?
I am, I am. The psychiatric evaluations are taking a really long time.
Why is that?
There is one provider that I'm aware of that will do them, Dr. Caleb Pope, and God bless her heart for doing these. In talking with some of the psychiatrists, they're afraid about coming, potentially leaving their practice with a timeout and then being compensated. And so some of the psychiatrists I've talked to, the fees for the services have been maybe something that has not been meetable. And then as well, I think probably going to court, I think a lot of them that I've talked to have a hard time. They don't really wanna testify in court, and so I've called a few, and they're like, I don't wanna go on the stand, and...
And I've heard that these delays can run into months. Is that correct?
That is correct. They can be three months.
And that these evaluations are actually conducted by the state, by HHS? Is that right? Or do we conduct them?
They're by probation. They're ordered through probation or the promiscip, and so they actually do not have a psychiatrist who works for them. They're contracted out.
Good. And you say essentially there's one provider, one psychiatrist doing all of these locally?
That's correct.
What, if anything, could we do to maybe fix that?
That's a really hard question. I think that maybe if they were compensated more highly, that's one thought that I would have that may draw them to do this, but I don't know if that's actually reasonable, if that could happen.
But as you indicated, their compensation is out of the state probation budget. It's not out of the Douglas County budget, or if you don't know, you can say you don't know, but...
That's correct.
Okay. We at Douglas County Youth Center do not have an adolescent psychiatrist there on staff. Is that right?
Correct. We are in process. We have a nurse practitioner, psychiatric nurse practitioner who is hopefully coming on board fairly soon through Heartland Family Service to handle the psychiatric medication management. That would be different, however, than evaluation process.
Right. That would be more care for the children in our care, right?
Correct.
That they're not currently receiving.
We have the nurse practitioner and Dr. Amy LaCroix who provide that care, and then we're the liaison to them so that they have their medications. I think we do a pretty good job, I'll be honest, in kind of working with what we have.
Right. I understand that you're constrained by your resources, but my sense is that we do an adequate job on psychotropic medications, I mean, filling their prescriptions and keeping them on psychotropic meds, but we don't have really extensive counseling services or consultation services between the children in our care and a licensed healthcare provider, you know, psychiatrist, psychologist. Is that right? Like on a day-in, day-out basis, the children who present with psychiatric problems are not seeing a licensed psychiatrist, psychologist while they're in our care there?
With our team, we have Ms. Steinkie and Ms. Calabrese, thirty-seven and a half hours a week, and then I'm there eighteen hours, and then the new therapist will be twenty. And so we can't see them every day, but I think that there certainly are some that have, that are most imminent in crisis or that have the most high level of need are seen most frequently versus the other population who's not presenting such issues.
Sure. In a recent discussion that I had with those people, I asked them, what, if you could have one thing, would be your number-one thing in addition to what's currently available? And they replied unanimously, an onsite adolescent psychiatrist. Would you concur in that?
I think that would be nice. Yeah, that would be great.
They said that's the number-one thing that they would request, if we could do that.
Psychiatrist or nurse practitioner, I think either one would be very good, but...
And you currently are there eighteen hours a week, correct? So, you know, with fifty kids in our care on average, that's a pretty significant load. I would imagine that you have some that you can see, but there's probably a need for additional resources to this concern. Is that right?
Would be nice, yeah. Would be nice. You know, I kind of really get to go on sometimes, you know, and...
Sure. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's okay, Doctor.
Thank you.
I first wanna thank Mary Ann and Chris for finally, finally, bringing this kind of a report to the board. I've been talking about this for two years, and we always, every month, we have a report from the adult facility, but we've never really had the extensive report like we've had this morning so far from the juvenile side of the house. And I think it points out, you know, some of the, particularly the remarks that Dr. Mathiason said today about the real need to, really, real need to improve some things. And I think probably what sticks me most is what you said about, after Commissioner Kavanaugh, I asked you, you said, "Those are really hard questions," and they are, and I appreciate your candor. In any event, I only wanna say that it's a big job ahead of us, and I'll have time to make some other comments, but I wanna thank Commissioner Borgeson and the Chair, Commissioner Rogers, for bringing this. We're gonna be doing this on a monthly basis, I believe, which is really terrific, so we'll be seeing a lot more of you. So thank you all for coming, and thank you, Commissioners.
So, Doc, let me, Dr. Matheson. Matisson. Thank you for your comments. Let me note, your comments are timely. Thank you for your comments. Let me note, uh, your comments are timely. My hope, my hope is next month, Commissioner Borgson and I and a group have been working with probation to address that particular conversation you just had. So next month, and within the month, Brad, we, we had to get it pinned down and see if the players are going to buy in. But there's been a discussion with the group from Creighton, UNMC probation, Commissioner Borgson, myself, about a proposal to do those services. So next month, we hope to bring that here during the, during the discussion. So your, your point is timely and relevant. Um, you got, Commissioner Borgson?
Thank you very much. This is, we talk about quite often, the mental health services, both at the adult and the youth facility, just recently really has come to the limelight. What piece that I would like to maybe get is what, what is our cost in these services? What are we spending right now on all services for mental health? And that might be more directed to Brad and them. But, and then your kind of outline of, when we sat down and had a conversation with Dr. Pope, those MT, MDT meetings were real important to start getting involved in. And then again, the, um, um, expediting the assessments and evaluations and how do we do that? And what staff are needed and, and such. But if you have other things that you think in terms of the programming or services of mental health in that facility that you think are missing, I would also be appreciative of you letting us know that so we can look at it as a whole. But for the next time, if we could at least get the cost estimates of what we're spending in totality, but broken down by whether it's drugs, whether it's the staff, whether it's, you know, the therapist, the psychiatrist and, and their time. You kind of outlined their time, but include that as well.
Yeah, I can get that to you. I mean, Dr. Matisson and the three LMHPs, Region Six pays Heartland. And, uh, and so we don't have any expense there, but we certainly do for psych, or for all medication.
But I think if we could have it on a spreadsheet, so you say, here's all the mental health services that we're currently providing. Here's the cost and here's who's paying for it. And then we'll start to fill in the gaps of what we're kind of missing. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna tee you up, Brad. So next, Greg Hepburn. Greg Hepburn has been repurposed in a role. What you're about to get now is a product that he and probation and Heather have been working on. Greg has been reclassified as what's called an expediter. And an expediter is part of the JDA process. JDAI process can either be housed in juvenile court or in the youth center, and we've housed it in the youth center. Greg is being trained with probation to be able to go through these reports. And what this is, and they'll be putting together these reports weekly and be able to get them to the board, is this is the status of every kid that's there and why they're there. And over time, Greg's role will be to follow up with the providers and try to get those kids moving or ask why they aren't moving and what's hindering in the way of getting them moving. So with that, Brad, I'll give it back to you. You can go to Greg.
So you're receiving, uh, two documents. One, and I apologize, we were having some problems with the computer. I was getting nervous that Greg and Mark weren't going to make it here on time. Traffic on Leavenworth was terrible. And then we end up with, I don't even know what that font is on that. It's way beyond my capabilities. Believe it or not, I think there is about seventy-five names listed right there. And that's, that's one list. And again, I want to mention that Heather Briggs from probation has really been outstanding. She's just been a real, real good partner. And so she's out and training, otherwise she would have been joining us today as well. But that list has got everybody on it. There's notes over on the, the right-hand side. And it, it, and then the, the second list may be able to have more of an impact. Those are kids that all have release orders. And you'll notice a couple of them say leave for Canyon State on nine eighteen. Obviously, nine eighteen is here and gone. I understand that there were some issues with the interstate compact, which they need to get taken care of before they can go to Canyon States in Arizona. And, uh, so that's something that, that Greg will continue to work on. And I, I'm not going to say too much, otherwise Greg's not going to have anything to add. But he's done a wonderful job. We've had to bring him up to speed with some computer programs that are going to help him be successful in his job. We've kind of accomplished that. The partnership with probation will be critical going forward. They have such a large role in this process, so. There you go, Greg.
Good morning. Greg Hepburn. Been at Douglas County Youth Center for almost five years now. And I'm really excited about this new phase of what my role is there because I've never seen so much inertia behind the release process, which is fantastic, as well as the admissions, you know, have maybe having a little bit more scrutiny in terms of who is coming in. So part of the thing that I've been tasked with is to, one, come up with a census of everybody who is there, some of the things that they're keeping them there for, and I'll go over that with a census report. If you just look at the size three font here, I'll just kind of go through the categories. The yellow part is just some demographic information, general identifying information that, you know, we can look at and see some of the determining factors of the kids who are in there. When you get a little bit more into the meat of it, the green part talks more about the charges specifically. And so what we did here is there's generally, on average, about five charges per youth, per detainee. And what we do is take the most significant offense that's against them at this point. We have that there. Then we also capture whether it's a new charge or whether it is not, whether it's a violation of probation, whether unlawful absence or whatever the case may be. In addition to that, we have the, whether, whether or not they have a release order. And this list that we have here, it's a, almost like a living, breathing document because there's so much fluidity in the release and the admit process that, you know, it's being constantly updated every day. Matter of fact, there hasn't been a day when I have not updated it yet. So that's the second piece. In addition to that, we also look at whether or not probation has made applications for any of these youth, which are keeping them there as well too, and, and the specialized information that talks a little bit more about that. I also like to capture whether or not they've come back to us from placement and whether or not they were terminated, excuse me, terminated, or whether or not they absconded from that placement. And then again, over on the right side, the notes that are there just talks a little bit about what some of the processes that are holding them up are in terms of whether it's interstate compact, whether or not they've had an evaluation ordered or whether or not it's, there's, there's space available or where they're waiting. So those are all the general explanations for all the youth that are in there. So that's the first part, the census report. The second part is the expediting list. This is something that send out weekly, typically every Friday afternoon to make sure that no one else is coming or leaving typically after court has, has gone. So send that out, taking obviously the names out, but just a couple identifying factors. They have mid-date, date of birth. There's a disposition in terms of what the court order specifically says. And then when the next court date is, and then the, some of the, just staff comments. So these are some of the reasons why these kids who have release orders are still with us.
Note, Greg, you got a couple of questions. Let me note though too that in talking with Greg with this, we didn't want the, the perfect to be the end of it or the good. So this list is constantly, the, whatever format will be constantly evolving. Any feedback the board has, please give back in that respect. So Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I, excuse me, I know you tried, but nobody can read these things. It's like kind of like put the Bible on the head of a pen. Excuse me. And I believe I, I made notes while you were speaking, but I think you said this, this green line here is the charges that are filed against the young people?
That is correct.
Okay, can, and.
The most significant charge.
Most significant. Would you give us a few samples of what those charges are? Cause I can't read them.
So robbery, um, we've got assault, whether it's sexual assault or physical assault against anyone. We've got violation of probation is probably one of the most significant ones, and then unlawful absences. And those are typically stemmed from the prior charges where they may have been released to home, back to the community. They may have been released to placement and have absconded or been terminated from there. And then some type of violation, whether, whether from the court or from probation specifically, or if there's just a capias that comes from the court.
Okay, so what is an unlawful absence? Tell me that's not truancy.
Unlawful absence is.
Running away?
Right, when they're not where they're supposed to be, whether or not where they've been court ordered to be at.
Okay.
Whether it's home, whether it's placement.
All right. And then, uh, I, I didn't get what this is all about in this last thing. What is this? These are problems with placement or something? I didn't get that.
Not necessarily problems, just indicators as to why the youth is still in detention.
In the, in the facility?
In the facility, correct.
Okay. And give us a couple snapshots of that too. What's that all about?
So interstate compact may be a reason. So as Brad mentioned, if someone has been ordered to Canyon State and there's placement that's available there, they still have to be supervised while on probation when they're down in Canyon State. So there has to be an interstate compact between Nebraska and Arizona before that child is able to go.
Okay, well, uh, I'm, as you can tell, I'm really speechless. This is a, a report that I'm really overwhelmed by the information because I don't know, any other Commissioners ever hear of Canyon State before? Okay, some have, some haven't. You know, this is why I was pushing for the, I have no clue. What in the world are we doing, sending kids to, and who's sending them to Arizona?
It's probation. Well, so the, the, the courts are sending them and then it's facilitated through probation.
So judges are sending them to Arizona?
Correct.
Okay, and they're also sending them to Whitehall. Where's Whitehall?
Just in Lincoln.
Lincoln. Okay, that's good to know. At least they're a little bit closer. And, and the parents, I assume, and then there's another one, Kids TLC. Where are they?
TLC is in Kansas City.
Kansas City. Missouri, Kansas?
I think it's Kansas.
Okay, well, and who pays for this? The taxpayers?
It's probation.
State probation?
Yes.
Correct.
So the state of Nebraska, thanks, Chris. State of Nebraska's paying for this?
That is correct.
And what about this, on the next page it says shelter. What's that? Omaha Shelter, Omaha Shelter?
Typically shelters are in Omaha. There's one in Grand Island that they utilize as well as one in Lincoln. But if, uh, the, the majority of them are sent to shelters in Omaha.
And by shelter, what do you mean?
Shelter is temporary emergency placement for someone who has been deemed, whether it's because of the home or whether it's because of the juvenile itself, not able to be at home. So there's temporary.
Okay, I'm really looking for, looking for the name of a shelter. What is it?
Child Savings Institute, Boyce Town has one as well too, and then Youth Links.
And what's the last one?
Youth Links.
Okay, and is this the one that's being run by some private agency that we have a contract with because of the state? Or is that just something that a judge is doing or what?
Youth Links is, Youth Links is Heartland Family Services.
Chris, let him answer. I'm sorry. Pardon me?
Yeah, that's, that's a little bit above my knowledge. I'm not sure.
Okay, fine. All right, well, and then youth, youth care and beyond, is that another shelter?
It's a group home.
And where is that?
It's in Omaha.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm really glad you're, we're finally hearing from, from this department. We know all about adults, but we don't know anything about the kids. So I really appreciate your hearing. And, uh, again, tell me again, are, are the judges ordering these Arizona and Kansas and, or Missouri or wherever placements? Are they, are the judges doing that?
They are, yes.
So they're the out-of-home placements? Is that what they're still called?
They're, they're called out-of-home placements. That's correct.
All right, and I'll ask Joe if he could tell me, if, not in this minute, but if you, sometime during this meeting, can you tell us what's that, what that's costing? I know it used to cost us just a little bit south of four million dollars for out-of-home placements. And I just wonder if we're still up there or we're quite a bit lower. I'll ask you if you could give me a figure a little bit later. You don't have to do it unless you got it now. Okay. All right, well, that's, that's fine. I, and the, I really appreciate the information. It's, in my book, it's so overdue. I can't believe it. So part my fault too, because even though I've been hammering to get this information in public, it's, I should have come down and seen you. I'm sorry I hadn't. Thanks. Thanks.
Commissioner Boyle, to your point, Youth Links is Heartland Family Services. Youth Links is Heartland Family Services.
What?
Youth Links is Heartland Family Services.
And that means what?
That's the agency that runs it.
Yeah.
A local agency.
Okay.
Now, to your point, and I'm gonna contest this, Greg just got into the position, changed it to the position in July. So we've been working toward this till now. But to your point about the report, the reports have been coming monthly from there. We've been working to get them to this point, but these reports have been coming monthly. So your point of you're asking and we're not bringing the reports, those reports have been coming monthly for the last year.
Okay, and where, where are they going?
You're getting them here. This, this report you get every month. And Brad comes up there and presents it. So now that we got a little more detail with Greg, that's why I've asked Brad to change it a little bit. It'll be changed to some degree. But I just want to be on the record, when you asked for that piece to come for the last year, we've been getting this. And I've got a year's worth in my.
Well, Brad, I, you know, Chris, we can go toe-to-toe on this. We've talked about this privately.
I don't want to go toe-to-toe, but I just want to make sure the record is correct.
I don't think I've seen or heard this kind of report or anything near Brad Alexander making this kind of a report. And I think it's overdue. If, you know, I don't know if I, I believe I've made most of the meetings this year, and I don't remember Brad Alexander coming up and giving us a full-blown report. Now, maybe I'm dead wrong and that's okay. But let's just move on. This is a big improvement, whatever's taking place. So please keep this up. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Thank you. And Greg, I missed your last name.
Hepburn.
Hepburn?
Yes.
You're on board since July, right?
Uh, in this new role, correct.
Correct. And it's expediting, right?
Yes, it is.
Making things go faster. How does that work? Tell us what, what you do to make these cases go faster and where do they go?
Okay, so just once we've put together the database, just being able to look over, look thoroughly through the information and see what some of the hindrances are for kids who are leaving and being able to be in contact, whether it's probation. As Brad mentioned, we have a fantastic relationship with Heather Briggs, who has been giving us a lot of this information here in terms of the updates, the statuses, the information. And then being in contact with Health and Human Services, Promiscip, and then just trying to get the process rolling in terms of, so for example, here's a, a recent case. Young lady who has been in since August eighth. Promiscip was supposed to, to, was supposed to have placement order for her. Had not done that and doesn't have court again until, until November twelfth. And so just getting on the phone with the worker herself and trying to get that process sped up so that she's not sitting around until November. So that's just a specific example.
And this, you know, when it works, helps us move children out of our youth center.
That's correct.
And that helps us keep our population low, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I, that's a good thing. I think we're all behind that. We, we just, I think, have questions relative to, having just seen this, some of the terminology in here that Commissioner Boyle was talking about relative to, these placements are occurring in places that frankly, I've never heard of before. Canyon State is where?
It's in Arizona.
Do we know where in Arizona?
I do not know specifically where.
There appear to be numerous Kansas State placements. And I was just wondering why, of all the places in the world to send our children, why are we sending them to Kansas State in Arizona? Do you know?
I do not know. That's not my specific role. That would be.
Mark Florin. As, as to that question, as youth get deeper into the system, if they re-offend and recidivate back into the system, it becomes a little bit more of a challenge to place some of the youth locally. So consequently, probation has to go where the youth can ultimately be accepted. And part of it is out of state in order to find some of the services that are available.
And, and I, I get that. The, the point I think that Commissioner Boyle was going to, and that I'm kind of curious about is, does the probation office order you're going to Kansas State or does the juvenile court judge order that? Who's, who's responsible for that placement?
The court is responsible.
Okay.
And probation goes through the, the process of validating. And probation goes through the process of validating an available spot for that placement.
But the individual judge would say, this child will go to Canyon State in Arizona, specifically?
That's correct.
Okay. Kids TLC, that's located here or where?
It's located in, I believe, Kansas City, Kansas.
Okay. And the same thing, it's one of the identified place, places for placement of our children that will take them. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. Whitehall, where is that?
It's in Lincoln.
Lincoln? Is that in the same category?
Typically, it's a different type of placement. Their facility is more geared towards sexual behaviors.
Okay. But again, the mechanics of the placement, the judge acting through probation places the child in Whitehall in Lincoln, Nebraska?
That would be the optimal case.
Okay.
But there are cases where a location may not have an available spot or locations may also decline to accept an individual.
Right. I'm just reading through here and it looks like some of them are pending, some of them have actually been placed and presumably are on their way or already there.
Waiting for an available bed in most cases.
So one of them references group home has been ordered. Is group home a term of art or is it a location called group home?
That, it's a-
It's terminology.
Right, it's a terminology, it's a level of care.
Okay. So it says in the disposition, it references a recommendation for Canyon State. Would Canyon State qualify as a group home then?
No, they're a placement. They're not considered a group home facility.
Okay.
The treatment center.
It says, recommendation for Canyon State will be taken under advisement. Group home has been ordered under probation dockets. Is that like a holding place, pending placement in Canyon State or Canyon State?
That's, that would be correct, based off of what you just explained.
Right, and group home would be a local venue, local?
Ideally, yes.
Okay. We have a home placement at capital S Shelter. Is that a place called Shelter or is that a, you know, a terminology for something?
I'm not familiar with that location.
Okay, it's referenced twice here on the second page. Reference one indicates you shall be released to probation for transportation to his out of home placement at capital S H E L T E R, Shelter.
Yes, Shelter in that regard is terminology for a level of care.
Okay. Do we know where Shelter would be?
So when that typically occurs, they will send applications out to several different shelters, all of which I mentioned earlier. And whichever one that they can get as expeditiously as possible is where they will attend.
And those are local placements?
They're all local within the state. There are, to my knowledge, three that are in Omaha, there's one in Lincoln and there's one in Grand Island.
Okay. What are they called? The three in Omaha, the one in Lincoln and the one outside?
So Boyz Town-
Okay.
Has a shelter. Child Savings Institute has a shelter. And Youth Links.
And I'm sorry, the third one?
Youth Links.
Youth Links?
Yes, which again is Heartland Family Services.
And those are all local? And then there's a Lincoln one you mentioned?
There's a Lincoln one, which is Cedars, has a shelter. And I stand corrected, there's a fourth one because Utahole has a shelter available for girls. And then the shelter in Grand Island is also Boyz Town.
Okay. And then youth care and beyond, is that a place or is that a program?
It's a program, it's a placement. It's a group home level of care.
Local, would that be-
Correct.
Similar to the Boyz Town, Child Savings, Youth Links, Utahole?
Different levels of care. The levels of care are shelter, group home, treatment, and then residential treatment center as well, for behavior.
Okay. On this, and thanks for this.
You're welcome.
I think that this would be great. It's gonna take us a little while to get familiar with terminology, but I think we can get there.
Took me a little bit as well, too. As you see, I'm still getting accustomed to it.
The, the one that's hard to read, believe me, I'm with you on getting the computer to print something that's doable. So it's a work in progress.
Indeed.
Hopefully, the next go around, we'll be able to actually read it. But is this the entire population of the youth center or what is represented on this page?
It is the entire population as of yesterday, this morning. If we had anyone that had come in yesterday, they were not placed on this list.
I see. And so there's a, you know, a fair number of kids here who have been there for, some of them a year. Those are basically holds for district court?
Correct.
Felonies and adult court?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that population is not eligible for these kinds of placements that we're talking about, right? They're awaiting trial or disposition in district court. Is that right?
That is correct.
So say we have a population of about 80 kids, more or less, but that's the average at any given time. Do you know, or maybe Mr. Alexander, Mr. Flor know the breakout between the ones that we would actually be able to do something, that you would actually be able to help expedite and the, and the population that's just there for disposition through district court and adult court?
I believe I saw that in the report. I'm not sure if that's correct or not.
Yeah, juvenile court holds, excuse me, juvenile court holds are 9%. The kids that are arriving on new charges, which would include some of those would be filed in adult court, that's about 47%.
Okay.
I looked yesterday and it was 16 of our 76 kids yesterday were in adult court.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for this and we look forward to future, a little more legible, but going forward, working on this. Thanks a lot.
I'll just bring magnifying glass next time.
Push the board.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks again for the report, but I do want to ask Brad, if you could, just a real quick question, I don't want you to answer it. Send us the answer. Do you do or does someone do background checks on these facilities? We're sending young people to Arizona. Please don't answer unless you know. But there's a terrible risk when we send children out of state and we have people, you know, who in the hell are these people that are taking care of our children even though they're serious offenders? You know, are we sure that they're safe? I don't want any sexual assaults occurring or anything like that or any, anything else taking place. Are you sure that we are, is someone sure? If the judges are sending them, I assume they have done a background check. Can you find that out and let us know? Or do you know?
I can speak to a part of that.
Go ahead.
I said I can speak to a part of that based on information that I do know.
Okay, go ahead.
I know that probation is down in Canyon State. I couldn't tell you how often, but I know they do go down there and tour to the extent that they do some sort of a history check or a conditions check or an inspection.
Do they do a criminal background check on these employees?
I can ask probation.
Well, I absolutely demand it. We absolutely are demanding, I am demanding, a criminal check on all the people who come into contact, including the guy who delivers the bread. I want everybody checked out everywhere we send these children. There's nothing less, okay?
Commissioner, can I just respond?
Sure.
This report, this is brand new.
Yeah.
This is something you haven't seen. This is the first time. This is something that we've been developing with probation since July.
Good.
And so we've been getting the reports from me monthly. I understand this is new, but it's new to us as well. We haven't even fully implemented this.
Okay. Well, if you could redo this in about 15 pages, it'd be great. But I do appreciate the effort and I appreciate the report is very, very useful. So thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Oh, sorry, I didn't see you. Commissioner Borgelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you guys. You know, your normal youth center report that you've been coming up and giving has been good. And what we are trying to do now is, if you go back to our conversations that we had probably earlier this year around February, March, April timeframe, when we started to really drill down on the length of stay, that's when Commissioner Rogers, under his leadership through Child and Youth Services, started to really take a look at that length of stay. It's always been looked at all along, but we were really refocusing on what and why the reasons were for that increase in length of stay. So I'm happy that we are where we are today and you've done a great job in your new position and I appreciate that. But one thing that I always do find curious, and Commissioner Boyle mentioned it, is, you know, the out of home placements, at one point, we were up in upwards of almost $4 million, I think it was three point something. And Promiship did a good job of going out and bringing those kids back. So we don't have the level that we had in the past, but we still have kids who are going out of state and out of home. But what I find curious is, you know, like this Canyon State, what does it have that we don't? Is what I think our further conversation needs to be, especially during our whole discussion as we talked about during the creation of a new juvenile justice system. They're going there for something. What are they going there for? And those are the conversations that I think we have to have. And this is good because now we see what those facilities are that they're going to and we can then take a look at, why are they going there instead of being placed here? I do understand that there are some who have kind of used up all their chances here, I guess is a good way to put it. Exhausted all means, but then again, what's there? And I will go back to getting on my soapbox one more time about this, and that is, you can send a kid to Timbuktu for, I don't care, from a month to a year. But if we bring them back and we put them in the same environment to which they were taken and none of that was even looked at as evaluated or we didn't get in there and try to make those changes, we're setting up that kid and family to fail again. And that's what I want to make sure that when we're looking at all of this, that's not missing. At some point, I think Commissioner Rogers is gonna have probation come to talk about their pilot on the home program, which is a more truer wraparound program, if you will, and the successes that it's had thus far and what we need to possibly build up that capacity or add more resources to it so that we can do exactly that. Because again, time and time again, we may be doing well for a short period of time for that kid by removing them from the situation or that environment, but they're coming back. At least we hope they're coming back. And they're coming back to that environment to which they are taken and that, that's not good. So if we could maybe further the discussion, and Commissioner Rogers might be the one to, I have this with, but really finding out, what does Canyon State have that we don't have? What does the shelters here, why are kids running from their shelters? You know, the saying goes, what are they running for or what are they running from or what are they running to? That needs to be answered. And so the shelter in Lincoln, why is that different than our shelters? That a child would be placed there and ran from ours? So those are all the discussions during these program and services conversations that we're having, that I would like to have. And also, we've talked about and will have conversations with folks who are in the system or have been in the system as to what they think can improve. So this is very good. You've done a great job. I know Commissioner Rogers had a lot of, did a lot of work on this to get to this point, but you've really hit the ball out of the park. You did a good job on the report for your first one and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan has a question, but Commissioner Borgelson, for your point, I can't say it specifically, but I know that the next coming of these probation will be here. They all had a training that they had to go to. But one reason that probation and I have been getting together for the last five weeks just to help me understand the numbers a little better. One of the reasons with Canyon State that I'm told and they can clarify is specifically, there's a degree of gang kid that's going to Canyon State that they're sending there. And some of the programs here locally are not taking gang kids. That's specifically, they got to clear it up and that's what was told to me. So.
But then that's a very good point, Commissioner Rogers, because that's where then again, we start to talk with those community providers to say, here's what's happening, here's why they're going there. Are you willing to step up and do we have the resources to be able to provide to those services here to ratchet up that and serve those kids here at home? So.
Commissioner Morgan?
Well, I want to express a thank you, Greg, to yourself for this report, Brad, Mike. The other thing I'd say, and I don't want to interfere because I don't have the expertise, but my thought might be, and I'd want probation, and you can think about it a little bit, Brad, maybe to at least look at the one in Lincoln that's close by to see what we're sending, how that could maybe be happening closer. The other thing I'd do without expense to the county is try to check out the one in Canyon State myself, but only if probation said that's not harmful to do. So you might check into that, Greg, to find out, just to kind of observe and see why that's such a popular alternative and what they're doing that maybe we're not doing. And I want you to know, I'm not offended if you say, hey, it'd be best you not do that. I'm okay with not doing it. But on a week when we didn't or don't have a meeting, you know, could go there for a day or two, just to make sure, talking to the people and kind of observing what's there. As I said a month ago or three months ago at this board, the most important thing, and I know you're all very committed, is that we do the absolute best thing for these young people. And Brad, you have 22 years, Greg, you have five years with us. You know, that's all any of us really want. It isn't about some bricks and mortar. It's really about those young people, their time and their future, most importantly, that we take them off that path and do something significant that changes the way it's going for them. So please let me know that. And if you say, hey, that could work three weeks from now or whatever, I want to do that if it makes some sense. Thank you.
So you're suggesting look into going down there and taking a look for ourselves?
Yeah, and if one of you are going, fine. But I'll make certain it's not any cost for me to go to the county. And Lincoln's close, that's an easy one, you know, to do next week or whatever, if you deem that and probation deems it not an interference. The last thing I want to do is interfere with your expertise. And when I look at this sheet, you know, the majority, at least two thirds or more, is since August that they've been at our youth center. I mean, I could luckily still read it. But that's what the numbers are since August and then a lot in July.
Okay. Brad, Greg, Mark, Andy, thank you.
Real quick, to your point, Commissioner, about the kids with the gang kids going to Canyon State?
And I use that term in general.
They're with us. We keep them. So it can't happen.
Well, I'm assuming what you sold me, but they'll be here next month to answer the question directly. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So while the next presenter's setting up, Commissioner, I mean Senator McDonald, I want to give you the courtesy that's given us at the State House. I don't know if you're here observing, if you want to, if you're here to testify the way, I'd like to give you the three minutes that we're gonna give everybody else for your time. I'd like to extend that courtesy if you do, please.
I am here to testify, but I'll wait, I'll wait, Richard. Thank you.
Bruce, you're?
I have a point of personal privilege here.
Please.
My understanding is that Mr. Carpenter from HDR is gonna present a PowerPoint presentation of their proposal for the Juvenile Justice Center campus that they are working on downtown. on downtown. There's been no public notice of this, and it's part and parcel, I think, of the less-than-high regard for the public's knowledge that these things are going on. We held a meeting last night in this very chamber to a large crowd of folks who had public notice that that's what we were going to talk about, and we put on PowerPoint presentations of the public. Media was here. This is really an indication of how this private corporation has dealt with this entire project behind closed doors. And then pop you a completed, here, take it or leave it solution, without any public notice that this was even going to be discussed. So that's what you're about to see. This has been jumped up in front of the resolution that Commissioner Boyle's proposing, so that it is convenient for them, not for you. And no one's had any notice that it was going to occur. So that's what you're about to see.
Let me, for the record, say that's, you're right in regards to, it was put on the agenda, and it didn't get put there, but there was an agreement that it could be presented in the context of Item Two, and I talked to Legal about that. To your point of something trying to be snuck on, that is absolutely wrong. For the last four weeks, we've been talking about the fact of using this date specifically for that. In the future, it's put down as a standard piece, so that is not the intent to any degree. So with that, please go.
There's not a word...
No, you're out of order. You're out of order. You're out of order. You're out of order. Bruce, please go.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak this morning. I just want to clarify that it's an update. We're not presenting the plan. There's some diagrams. We don't need to show those. But it's just an update of activities since and activities that are planned in the future. We did give more of a briefing in an open 501(c)(3) meeting earlier this month as well. So I think the discussion this morning has been excellent, and the progress. We have been talking about the length of stay that's unusual compared to other communities across the nation, and there has been really good work to get to this point, and the appointment of an expediter is right on target, the discussion, the having more emphasis on availability of psychiatrists, not just for the kids, but it extends as a wraparound for the family and what's causing some of these behavioral issues. So I just want to say that this has been a breath of fresh air to hear this conversation, and it goes right to the point that we're working on, and that is to do what we can to reduce the length of stay, which reduces the average daily population, which takes the kids out of detention and places them in an environment that could be more restorative and put them on a track that is better for the community. So all of that discussion is excellent. Commissioner Morgan, you made one point that it's not necessarily about brick and mortar solutions. There's some exception to that, and as an architect, I'll point that out. It is largely about the programs, and there are concurrent tracks of programming and policy and design for the facility. And we're communicating with each other and informing each other what's going on. So the guiding principles are the same, that there's a need for juvenile courts, obviously, that's without question. And then what we've been talking about this morning is the opportunity to improve the juvenile justice system with a transformative design. And that has a lot to do with programming and policy, but what we're convinced, it has a lot to do with allowing a facility or a design that facilitates communication between all departments. The idea of having all of the services combined, co-located on one site is vitally important in getting to the next step, in reducing, to the fullest extent, the length of stay and the population. So these are just notes, and they're an update of activities. We're continuing our space planning meetings with the judges, attorneys, probation, the youth center. We have meetings this afternoon with Brad and his staff, and other support services that are in the community or supporting, in other ways, the juvenile justice programs. We're on target out of that space planning of approximately 168,000 square feet for the tower, which includes attorneys, courts, probation, and approximately 60,000 square feet for the youth center. These were kind of where we projected we would be, and in all of the detail that we've been gathering, that's where we're ending up.
Excuse me, Bruce. The sheet that you have, it's like it's September 25th and minus September 24th. Am I missing something?
Right. So I did get an update right as I was sitting here. So there's a couple of points on this that are different than yours, and I'll get you...
How many points are you having that update of activities?
I think there's just one additional one. And then planned activities, there's one additional. And I'll point those out, Commissioner Boyle, and get you the most up-to-date.
What's the additional activity that activities?
The additional activity was the public 501(c)(3) on September 7th of this month.
Okay, so again, what is that? What was that all about? I know the... September 7th was our... Oh, okay.
Yeah. It was just, it was an open meeting at the request. Right. Right. So to go back, and I was going to point that out. Thank you, Commissioner. So the budgeting is on target for 120 million. We're working really hard to identify and in detail...
I have a question on that.
Yes.
We haven't seen any numbers from you whatsoever.
Wait a, no, no, no. Wait, wait. Now, I let that...
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought...
Yeah, but I declared it. Ask if you want to. I'll let him finish. I've been recognized. Please continue.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate...
I'm trying to, Mike, I'm trying to, to some degree now. I tried to, I tried to respect you. No. He will get, Mike, he will get a chance to get his question in there.
Some of us are going to have to walk out if you don't get on the ball.
Let Commissioners speak.
Bruce, please go.
Is there a double standard here?
It's not a double standard.
Some Commissioners can speak, and some Commissioners can't.
The standard will be there. You're out of order, and I've asked, you've hurried my ruling. No.
But I can't speak?
No. You're asking, you're asking something on something else, and no one will be speaking. No one will speak without recognition. Bruce, please go. Mike.
Let the chair run the meeting, please. Well, in an arbitrary fashion is possible, but some Commissioners can speak and some can't, obviously.
Bruce, please go.
So we are working on a budget, and we'll present the detail of that when we get to a point that it's ready to present. But we are working towards...
When is that going to be?
You haven't been recognized, man.
Anytime we get to numbers, there's no recognition.
No, that's not the point.
So the other point is, there was site visits to Hennepin and Ramsey County, and I would call this a reconnaissance, too. What we were seeing, and what's published in those two counties, is pretty astounding with the length of stay and the average daily population, and the mixed-use development around those sites. And Hennepin and Ramsey, if I'm sure you're aware, is Minneapolis and St. Paul, the cities in those counties. Ramsey is very close to the population of Douglas County, about 540,000, so it's comparable in demographic. And we also met with, had neighborhood meetings with the Flatiron District and with the developers of the Flatiron District. And I would say, there's concern with the design and what that will be. And I think you'll see from these other communities that juvenile justice centers that have been in the district for almost two decades haven't stifled development. In fact, what we saw was continued development in those areas. I mentioned the track for a community programming and policies focus, and a lot of what we heard today is what we're looking for results out of that. How do we, this is a large issue, and how do we get our arms around it? There's complexities. But it's important to look at those, and that's what's going to help us move to the next level. The planned activities are meetings with legacy families, which are families that have had some exposure to the Douglas County Youth Center, and understanding what that experience was, and learning from that experience, and how we can improve the facilities from that perspective. And also kids in the youth center. And that yields more ideas than you might imagine. The kids are very open and direct, and talking to them about what the experience is always yields some great ideas. And so that's part of what we'd like to hear. And those meetings will be scheduled. Again, continuation of the community programming policies. At the end of our program, space program analysis, it will be submitted to the state for review. And we also have a presentation to Omaha Chamber of Commerce scheduled in October. We have discussions planned with King County, which is Seattle, essentially. It's a larger county, but they're, they've gone through the process that we're at the front end now, and we think we can learn from their experience. They're also planning all of the components on one site. And then what we found in Hennepin and Ramsey County was important, so having continued discussions with counterparts there to learn what they've gone through in the last number of years. So I'll flip through these, so we don't, we're not unfair. But I did want to, we have some bullet points on Hennepin County. Hennepin is 1.2 million, so it's a larger community. It is a therapeutic model, and they've begun, just like Douglas County years ago, to improve their model. With 1.2 million, it's about two and a half times the size of Douglas County. They have 88 beds. Their average daily population is 45, again, two and a half times the population. And their average length of stay is seven days. It's almost unbelievable, and that's why we wanted to go up and verify the things that they were doing. It is multi-story in an urban setting, and it includes the youth detention, the courts. They have eight judges, probation, attorneys, space for community service. And they have an extensive use of community coaches, which is really mentoring. So as soon as a child comes in, they're assigned volunteer mentor. So we found this pretty enlightening. They have a great staff and leadership of the youth center, and I think having continued conversation, they're very open to have us meet, and so we want to continue those. It's the full community. It's not just the youth center. And I want to make sure that we're not saying this was Brad or his staff's responsibility to reduce this. This is really a team effort, and the team includes everybody in the community, including law enforcement. But you can see from this image, this is the Viking Stadium. It's right across the street where that red target is. They're on TV on Sundays when the stations are at a game. And no one ever knows what the facility is, of course, you know. You can see large development around office, residential, retail, public space. So this is a vibrant community, and probably a billion dollars' worth of investment with the stadium. So the next one, I'm sorry, is Ramsey County. And Ramsey is 538,000, very similar, as I mentioned, therapeutic model, 44 beds in the same population. Average daily population is 24, and the length of stay is eight days. They do have youth charged as adults, which is something that's an issue in our system, and how are they working with that, is more stringent focus. I would say laser focus on moving the kids and getting them in better accommodations. All the youth receive a hearing within 36 hours, so case management is important. They have a standing court date of 1:30 every day, so if you come in that day, you may go to court 1:30 to get a schedule, or if you come in the afternoon, you may go the next day. Again, urban context, all of the components in one location. And what this does, this is key, and I know that there's concern about acquisition of property. What this does, when you're able to provide it all in one location, is it provides instant communication. They were talking about communication with probation, communication with attorneys and judges in setting court times. When we were there, a judge called for a youth to come up to talk to him about an issue, and it was an issue regarding cellphone. And that happened while we were there. They walked through a secure corridor to see the judge and came back, almost immediate. And that's the kind of thing, I tell our clients, we don't do magic, but this is the kind of thing that gets us from, say, 30-day length of stay down to numbers that we're seeing here. This is a long road, and it's complicated, but I think there's examples to look at. Again, one more thing. If you look at the development around this youth center, there's a children's museum right across the street that's fairly new, really a nice facility. There's a historic diner right across the street. There's a new residential, just what I think is to the north, that was recently built. So a church a half a block down. So again, mixed-use development right in the core of the city. So these are really important aspects to consider, and we're happy to be a part of this project. I personally think there's a social justice, humane issue here that is bigger to consider. All of these things reduce costs on an ongoing year-to-year basis. If we reduce the number of kids in detention, that's a significant number in millions that could reduce costs. Programs outside, the detention are always less than housing a youth in detention. So with that, Chris, I want to be respectful of the time of our chairman.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Craft.
Thank you. So, nice commercial, but in the pages that we have in front of us, there's one number, and it's 120 million. And it says, "Budgeting aren't targeted at 120 million." When are we going to see a budget on this? Because you haven't shown us any budget at any of your presentations.
We work in great detail on tuning that to the facilities that we're looking at. We haven't completed our schematic design or programming session, so there's steps, I would say, the end of October. But we monitor this very closely. And this isn't a commercial. This is serious, serious business, and it's professional work. So I want to make that point.
Sure. And this is serious, serious business, and professional work requires a budget. You've been working on this for months now, and you have not presented us with a single number beyond this $120 million budgeting on target. I presume that there's something to back that up. Isn't there anything that you can show us? Numbers on paper?
It's a process, but we want to be sure that that process is complete before we present it to the public.
The public hearings that have been held on this, I don't think you've attended a single one of the public hearings that Administrative Services Committee has held, but are designed to talk about these types of things. And there was one as recently as last night, where numbers were talked about. And alternatives, alternative budgets have been presented at no cost to the taxpayer. Why can't we get a, why can't we get a...
Hold up, Jim. You'll get your time back. Everybody. Now, I try to lean a little bit of courtesy, let some stuff get asked. Everybody get a grip. I said this before the beginning. I said this before the beginning. Now, I'm not about to govern over kangaroo court, and we're adults. See?
Why can't we get a budget? I mean, why is it so difficult for you to present us with a budget after months of work on this project, even a preliminary budget? We have a multimillion-dollar municipal corporation here, and we have budgets all the time, preliminary, intermediary, final. Why can't you give us a budget?
As I said, we want to make sure that the budget, before it's public, that it's thoroughly vetted.
Okay. But, the county's supposed to commit to something without a budget, and, you know, it's a little disconcerting. On the examples that you showed, there aren't even numbers on these, but maybe you know them, and you're just not sharing them with us. So, let me ask you, on the examples that you've given us, which are counties not in Nebraska, but Ramsey County, Minnesota, how much was that project? Do you know?
It was, it's about 18 years old, so I don't know what it, it has a similar scale as the project we're talking about.
All right. You guys didn't do this project, did you?
No.
And the other one was at Hennepin County?
Mm-hmm.
How much was that?
Again, it's about 18 years old. I'm not sure the cost would be relevant.
I see. Okay. Are either of these, like the proposed site that you're pushing here, within a couple blocks of their adult correction center? Either of these locales?
I don't know that they are. When we visited it, it wasn't something that we...
I see that one of them was built with 88 beds and operates with 44 beds, right? So, have you been in that facility?
Yes.
What'd they do with the other 44-bed space?
So, what we see in visiting juvenile detention centers around the country is the closing of modules, the same thing we have. They were built larger, they're being closed and used for storage or other purposes. So, they're difficult to renovate because of the construction, but they're, so they're pressed into storage, mostly, or just vacated. So, there's some of that.
So, the ability to build for your population and then decommission as you go along exists in both of these facilities, correct?
I would say in many, and it's a result of JDI implementing improvements in juvenile detention, the change in the ratio of staff to kids, and change in ideas of accommodations.
Well, we look forward to you sometime in the, hopefully, near future, bringing us some actual numbers on this proposal. Thank you.
We look forward to it as well.
Commissioner Boy.
Yes. Well, let me clarify something. I was asked if I would allow Mr. Carpenter to speak prior to my presentation. I said yes, absolutely. So, but I do agree that there's probably technically a problem, but it is just an update. And I know you don't have answers to this, but one of the things that, when I look at the reports on the Ramsey and also Hennepin County, and in one of them, you said it includes youth charged with adult offenses.
Yes.
And one of the things that was reported, I don't know if it was this week or last time, but the new charges that have been, there are 14 offenders that we have at the Douglas County Youth Center now. And they have committed 84 of all of the admissions that have, account for 84% of all admissions, which I don't really understand exactly what that means. But, the offenses that we're dealing with, you know, someone stopped me and was talking about, I was at the grocery store, and stopped me and said, you know, who are the kids that are out here? And I said, well, I said, you know, pretty much, they're pretty much in trouble. They've had troubled childhoods and gone off the rails and so on. Okay, so let me just tell you, here's who's in our facility. The leading charges, robbery, gun charges, assault, including domestic violence, terroristic threats, theft, receiving stolen property, sexual assault, possession of a contraband, controlled subject, or excuse me, substance, burglary, accessory to a felony, criminal mischief, arson, and murder. You know, I mean, we need to focus, and I really wonder whether, I mean, I know that some of these numbers have been driven down, but I wonder whether these young people haven't already gotten themselves, for a lot of reasons, maybe not their own fault, into this kind of lifestyle. I really am concerned about it. I mean, we're dealing with some people, gangs. I know that Mr. Alexander, they have to be very careful, just like the adult facility, with placing certain people in certain places and keeping them separated because of the violence that can occur. So, you know, there are some young adults there who really have troubled background. And we can't expect miracles, but we can expect some, hopefully, some changes with what's happened in other places and what we can possibly do. But, I think we need to be reminded of that, because, you know, it's, these are not just kids who have cut school or have shoplifted some nail polish someplace, you know? And I am going to look into, I think I'll ask maybe Marcos, he always looks up when I say that, but anyway, to look into the cost of these facilities 18 years ago and so, and also whether, where their adult facility is located. You know, and I couldn't agree more, you know, I've been, this morning I had a long phone conversation with someone who said, people are saying, what's the matter with Mike Boyle? Well, the deal is that I, you know, been trying to listen to people and trying to ask questions about, and some of the things we should have done that you mentioned in here, frankly, I'm glad you're doing them, but we should have done this last July or August or something, you know? And not your fault, okay? It's as much my fault. I asked about it, but I didn't follow through, because I thought it was going to be done. But, in any event, I appreciate the report that you gave and keeping us up to speed. We don't agree on some things. We talk frequently, even this morning early by text, and we'll continue to talk. And so, I appreciate your services. May not agree totally. We do agree that all the services should be in one place, and it should be one that's really focused on the treatment of the children, which I can assure you, everyone on this board, from Commissioner Kavanaugh to Commissioner Borgeson, agree on all of that. Every one of us agree on that principle. So, thanks a lot. I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Bruce, let me make a clarification. So, I think when Brad said, he said about 16, I think I heard 16, 16% of those kids are in adult charges. So, all of the other, all of the other kids, no, he said when asked on the podium, all of the other kids there are on charges where they're sitting there waiting to be placed somewhere. Now, let me clear up terroristic threats on what was told me by probation. The way that's listed in probation can get into it next month. The way that's listed is not like somebody's given a terroristic threat of a terroristic threat as it sounds. I'm trying to make this better. The example that was given to me, I'm a kid in school, and today I know that's a little different, but a friend of mine, you say something to some degree, and I say, I'm gonna kill you. That's listed as a terroristic threat. Now, you don't know the degree of that, but some of these, just to say them off and how they're listed, the burglaries or burglary in general, there's a degree to some degree, so all of those, because they sound a certain way, aren't the same way in adult as they are in juvenile. But of them, 60% are adult. The other remaining percent are kids sitting there waiting for a placement. So, please.
The reason I'm confused by it is the headline, heading of this, it says, new charges dash 14 offenses, account for 84% of all admissions from January to August. Maybe it should be 14 offenders.
No, that's right.
14%?
That, the way they're framing that is right. I'm just saying, to some degree, to set up the point you made about, I was trying to set up the terroristic threat piece.
Oh.
I don't want it to be seen, because it's not the case as if a majority of, because this goes to the size argument, like there's a majority of kids that are there that are there for some serious adult stuff. Only the 16% that he stated there that's there in adult court are there on adult stuff. Everybody else is there for treatment and waiting placement. So, that's the juvenile piece. That's what I wanted to clarify, because I didn't want anybody to think that terroristic threats and all these degrees, that they're different meanings behind them in the juvenile realm than they are adult.
Let me ask you a question, then. When this chart says 8% made terroristic threats, 8% of what, 14? 8% of 16?
Oh, you're looking at brass tacks. I'm looking off of the listed chart here.
Okay. Well, anyways, we can talk about it, but, you know, I wasn't trying to mislead, I'm just reading what happened off the chart.
That's what, as far as I was stated, the, I've been looking at, and I still have issues with some of them, but I've been looking at this for 10 years, so I understand some of the ads, wanted to clear it up. Commissioner Morgan, please.
Bruce, thank you for being here. And I want to be sure all of us work to be respectful of anyone who comes here, whether they totally agree with whatever we might think or whatever. I've said it before, I'm not in any rush. I mean, I want to see us get this done, but I also want to see us get it done right. So, I don't want you to feel that you have to be back here October 15th with numbers. I think the more discussion we have, the more information we have, and we look at options or whatever people bring us, is going to help us to hopefully make the right decision for the next 75 years or whatever, because what I just saw in Minneapolis, St. Paul, you know, is good information, because it shows that those areas are developing in positive ways around their stadium. And if it was 14, 18 years ago when they did it, I know that stadium was built in the last five years up in Minneapolis, and it's in a condo area and all kinds of things in their downtown area, and it hasn't been detrimental. So, I want you to have the right numbers, you know, so that we don't go off and think this is the right thing to do, and we're going to be here to make a decision. But I'm not ready to make that decision today, even if you had the exact numbers. So, if I can speak for myself, you know, we want you to have the right numbers so we don't end up figuring out what happened in Denver with their Veterans Hospital, and I think it's a billion dollars over the budget. So, I respect you doing what you're doing, and hopefully, the numbers may be better than what we've heard, is my hope. So, thank you.
That's the goal as well.
Okay. CNN, Bruce.
And if somebody noticed something a little bit...
Commissioner Borgson.
Can I just say one last thing? I'm sorry. If someone noticed I stood or jittery, I did have, and I don't want it, I prefer to stay in the room, but I know we're on TV. I had some spinal surgery for a couple hours last week, spent a little time in hospital here. But I want to be here for all these discussions, no matter what. So, I hope we all give courtesies to one another and realize how lucky we are even to be here. So, that's all.
Commissioner Borg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Bruce, for the update. And I just want to reiterate that, as we had stated and planned, these monthly updates will take place again on the last Tuesday of the month. So, we are excited about constantly bringing new information and new discussions for the project. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
It was pointed out that Bruce used the term JDAI, and a lot of people don't know what that is, as Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative.
Thank you. My fault, I forgot.
Always, always a high point of my day when I ask about...
Okay, so...
This is from a man who spells his first name M-A-R-C.
All right. We're going to now, this is what we're going to do, it's 11, about 11 o'clock, 11:40. What I'd like to do is take two, item two under Finance, item two under Child and Youth Services, and item two, three under there are related to the same thing. They will have motions and seconds. What we're going to do is, I'm going to allow 40 minutes of discussion for those people that are pro these. At 11:40, roughly around 11:40, 11:45, we will have the same amount of time for people that are against these three. I'm going to ask everybody for three minutes to give multiple time, because these have been commented on several times, so all this information is not new, and it's not stifling to some degree. So, when you see that light go green, I'm going to ask you to wrap up, because that's the three-minute mark, and then we'll go from there. Again, I would ask that people make their point. You will get one bite at the apple, meaning you'll get to comment on them once, and again, we'll go three minutes and go from there. Now, if everybody, if people that are done saying what they're going to say pro are done before 40, we'll go to the next piece. But 40 minutes will be allowed to get that, because we've already discussed this. So, state your name and please go.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask those who are speaking to come down here to the front, so that saves some time. If you would, sit in these first two rows, and then you can step up, be a lot quicker. Secondly, I'd like to, would you raise your hand? She has parking passes to get out of the public garage, and so anybody who is in this room, I don't want to call this out to people at home to come down and get a parking ticket, but anyway, you can get out of the parking garage with the ticket. Raise your hand and let people know you have them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And let me clarify, Commissioner Boyle, right now, we're going into those people that are for these things. If you're for the, for, they are pro the resolutions. And then, we'll go for those that are against. So, if you are pro the resolutions, please sit up front. If you're not, you'll get your chance in the next piece.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Rogers.
Wait a minute. What's your question?
We have three resolutions here. Haven't been offered, haven't been seconded, and we're proceeding to discussion.
They will be, as I stated before, Commissioner Kavanaugh, I'm going to give, all of three of them are related. I'm going to give the discussion on them, and then we will vote on each one of them after separately.
I appreciate that, but many people probably haven't had an opportunity to read these. What I'm saying is that the discussion should be predicated by, okay, here are the resolutions that we're talking about, and maybe somebody could read them. If we don't want them to know it, that's fine.
We'll do those at the time of the resolution.
May I read this one, please? It's very brief.
Please read all three of them.
Okay. I'm not going to make any comments at all, there's too many people to speak. The resolution I'm offering is to rescind the county board's July 10, 2018 resolution that directed the county to proceed with eminent domain of the Marcy Mason property located at 420 South 18th Street. That is my first resolution, and I would offer it.
Commissioner Boyle, if you, Commissioner Boyle, if you want to, put all three of them in there.
Well, I just assume doing it one at a time, because we can, I don't know how people want to speak at...
No, I'm having everybody speak, because they're all the same family, so if you want to read all of them.
All right. The second resolution is to postpone the proposed Juvenile Justice Center projects, so all options can be discussed publicly, including location and requiring a vote of the people on the bond issue. This involves changing the financing, because we're using the building commission, which I talked to our finance guy, Joe Lorenz, and actually, it's costing us a million dollars more to use the building commission over the life of the bonds. We ought to be talking about that. And I do want to be able to bring in people who have had children in the system. I want taxpayers, I want CASA to be able to discuss this. I want every interested person to have a chance to do this. It's overdue, so that's the reason to postpone it, is...
And I will second that.
All right. And the next resolution is to renovate the Douglas County Youth Center to accommodate the county board's desire for a modern juvenile detention facility that incorporates best practices in juvenile, in the juvenile justice reform. That, again, I think is something we really have not vetted, we haven't discussed it. It's something that we ought to consider very seriously. Is that the best location, best practice? Is a higher use of the land, does it make a lot of sense? You know, and I think it's something that we ought to look into. So, those are my propositions.
And I will second that.
Mr. Clerk, I'll come back and individual ask for each one separately. So, when we get there, I'll ask for a motion to second follow-up for your records. Please proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. My name is Jeff Stevens. I volunteer for Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom, and I gave the clerk a bundle of documents. They're just a cover sheet for our news release. There's an issue paper that I developed regarding the process. There's an issue paper from Doug Kagan, our president as well. And we are here because we primarily support the resolution to postpone the proposed center project. And I can't possibly read this in three minutes. If you refer to the issue paper, September 2018 issue paper regarding proposed Douglas County Juvenile Justice Center, I am just going to hit the high point, so if you can follow along, I've got numbers associated with each particular topic. Leading into this, I am a licensed professional engineer. I got my license in 1989, worked for a large company for a number of years, worked for a short time as a structural planner reviewer for a local building department, not Omaha. And for the last 20 years, I'm... not Omaha, and for the last twenty years, I'm a part-owner of a small engineering company here in town, worked on a variety of projects. So while this is not an engineering analysis, it is related to topics that I deal with as a businessperson in a technical field on an often basis, so. Item number one on the first page, the awarding of the four prime consultant contractor agreements. I looked back at the cancer center model that this has been referred to, found in an article in the World Herald from February two thousand and sixteen, that looked at this, and the World Herald concluded that the university had an exemption, an exception to the state law that required public competitive bidding on construction projects, and that was specific to the university. Now, I'm not an attorney, I'm an engineer, but I did look at the statute to see if I could find out how the World Herald reached that conclusion, and for the attorneys in the room, statute seventy-three dash five oh four, competitive bidding requirements, describes competitive bidding, and terms, the terms are defined in seventy-three dash five oh two, and I'll provide these to the clerk as well, that shows how the, the university does get that exception.
Thank you. Who's next?
Please read the rest of my paper.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, sir.
We don't need to rush through this testimony. These people have worked hard.
Mike, I'm not rushing. I, we stated beforehand that everybody's gonna get three.
That's not fair. I really am concerned that we hear from the public, why do we need to cut this off? I know what you're...
Because we, no, we got a hard, as I said before at the other meetings, there's a hard one-thirty stop for this room.
There'll be plenty of time, it's only eleven to ten.
No, and that's what I'm saying, you're gonna have forty minutes from the other side, so I'm giving all the pros, and, and it's not, this, this conversation has happened before several times, and I'm trying to be fair to that, so.
I think you're wrong, but that's the way life is sometimes.
I'm trying to be fair. Please go.
Okay, Doug Kagan with Nebraska Taxpayers, and I'll just continue what Jeff said. Bottom of the first page, to date, our request for the contracts for the four prime consultant contractors have not been granted, nor have our request for a detailed breakdown of the one point four or five million of partial funding approved by the Douglas County Commissioner has been forthcoming. At least four of the prime consultants had exclusive access to the space needs study expert taxpayer expense prior to the contract award. Also, further down on page two, despite the characterizations of the public building commission, we have not been provided any evidence that the additional service was for the mutual benefit of the expert consultants, specifically that the meeting increased the depth or quality of their services and the attendees. Again, farther down, responses to our public document request for more detailed information of Mr. Kavanaugh's alternative do not include itemized costs for the various aspects of his proposal, including acquisition costs, tenant relocation, allowances for remediation, repair, remodeling. We believe it's irresponsible, given the magnitude of this project and the emotional reaction of many Douglas County residents, to give people false hope using an alternative proposal with a budget that cannot be substantiated. Now, our alternative proposal, some points, we would like the board to issue a request for qualifications, to select a short list of qualified developer, designer, contractor, bidder teams to bid on this project. Also, we would like the contract to be awarded using a technically acceptable least cost selection analysis. Also, public projects of this magnitude should be approved by the public via the ballot box. This is a surprising issue, given the previous occasions over several years where the Douglas County Commissioners have been open to hearing our input and have accommodated the taxpayers. Example, the two thousand and sixteen public safety bond is one example, where we gained our support of a forty-five million dollar bond that would be financed such that the county budget for debt service would not increase. As well-intentioned as the juvenile justice center proposal may be, citizens must guard against a tool that can be misused or abused by future less scrupulous elected officials.
Mike should wrap it up, Doug. Mike should wrap it up.
Okay. The mandate by the state of Nebraska for a sixth juvenile court judge, the long overdue need to address our deteriorating existing courthouse, and the well-intentioned desire to improve the outcomes for those impacted by the juvenile justice system appear to be blinding our county board to this risk. So we urge you strongly to negotiate with us and talk with us about our alternative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Luis Jimenez, five eighteen North Fortress Street. Good morning. Since there's three resolutions, so I was hoping to speak to one, so, anyway, I want to urge you to vote yes for time. A yes vote is not a vote against the process, any individuals, entities, offices, efforts, history, or interests. By coming to a halt, a pause, a respite, a disconsul, an inclusive discussion can occur where the public and the county can make a decision as a community. A yes vote does not prevent proponents from bringing this back if the manifold of participants fail to bring other good and proper action, although that would require the judges to wait a little bit longer. But, but, Mr., Mr. Kraft, I'm asking you to vote yes on coming to a halt, a pause. Also, Chair, the Chair of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, Chris Rogers, was described by the Omaha World Herald as saying that he was following board rules and parliamentary procedures in not allowing debate or public comment during intense board meeting where public members were removed in a moment of confusion. Orders of the day are often shuffled around by Mr. Rogers, and frustration spilled over after citizens comment. A clarification must be made that the Board of Commissioners only rely on their rules of order during plenary sessions. These rules do not cite a parliamentary authority for their parliamentary procedures. In fact, Chair Chris Rogers voted no earlier this year on a three-to-three vote not to adopt Roberts' Rules of Order newly revised. That motion did not carry, since it did not have a majority, and therefore it is disingenuous for board members to insist they are following anything other than their own rules of order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll need the overhead, please. My name is Brian Smith, six five one six Emmett Street. For the last eleven weeks, people have been here in the room, talking to you. We are your early warning system. This alarm has been going off for eleven weeks, because we have not had the confidence that the county commission is acting in the benefit of the kids of our county. Over the last, mainly over the last eleven weeks, there have been over eighty-five news stories about eminent domain, about the process by which this has, this concept has unfolded. What you should notice is, or what you should ask yourselves is, why do these people keep showing up? Why do they keep taking up our time? Why do they keep fighting this? We support courtroom expansion. We support new offices for the attorneys. We support a renovation of the Douglas County Youth Center and increased funding for programs and services, which we have not seen. People, I, I've coordinated two different meetings, two different public meetings, I've assembled over a hundred people by myself, and they have said over and over again, we don't know what's going on, we want better services for our kids, we don't need new buildings. We need to renovate the, the buildings that we currently have. One of the things I would like to point out is also, this is a transcript here of a World Herald story from August of two thousand and seventeen, that talks about the Douglas County considering a new home for juvenile justice. Nowhere in this news story does it ever talk about detention. In the contract going up to the Chin Group and DLR, nothing in there originally was about detention. And we'll have you note in this, that in two thousand and four, the Douglas, Omaha Douglas Public Building Commission tried to get a two-story addition approved, and it went nowhere. In two thousand and six, HDR Architecture promoted a hundred and sixty-nine million dollar plan that was not adopted. Now they're coming up with a, oh, I'm sorry, there's another step. This is the Downtown Omaha twenty thirty plan, which was published in two thousand and ten. In this, HDR again proposes a detention district here in the Flatiron space. So whether it's Jim Suttle, or George Little, or Mr. Carpenter, they've been angling on this for over a dozen years.
Thank you, Mike.
I still have twenty-four seconds left here on the clock.
No.
It says twenty-two.
No, when it turned green, it's three, so, thank you. And thank you.
Mr. Carpenter also equated downtown of Minnesota, Minneapolis, with downtown Omaha, land of a hundred holes. We do not...
Will you ple, Brian, will you please, thank you. Three minutes is there. Who's next?
Thank you.
Brian, thank you. Thank you. Again, if you come, I ask you to respect the light. When it's at green, it is three. At green, listen to me, please. As I said at the beginning, because this is familiar, usually it's five, we're going to three. At green, it turns three.
We're setting it at three, so when it's red...
Okay, so, so now you're resetting it there? Okay. Now it is reset. When it goes red, it's there. Thank you.
Good morning. Bob Perrin, eleven to one, South Thirty-Sixth. I'm an architect working on a building at four twenty South Eighteenth Street. I'm gonna put an overhead on if I can, please. This is, has a lot of new information on it. One of them is that when people come to Omaha, that's one of our main industries, is tourism, conventions, they ask for historic sites to see, and places to walk around. They never ask to see our new government buildings. Luckily, we have people staying at the Magnolia Hotel, which asked that question, and here's a path that we send them on. We send them to the Orpheum Theater, to the Key Line, the courthouse, Empire State, the Rose, OPB Garage, the Redfield, the Law Building, the Flatiron, an old Cadillac building that hasn't been discovered yet as being historic, and this one at four twenty that hasn't been discovered yet either. This is a three-dimensional view of those very same sites, and you can see how the city's starting to develop. It's an important historic district, an important historic fabric to our community. Keeping buildings makes things visible and makes things real to us. That's why we go to see the Liberty Bell and the Statue of Liberty, because they're physical items. That's what we identify with, and that's where our history comes from. Last Saturday morning, a woman called me, Adriana Van Winkle, and her sister Judy Andreessen, called me because their grandfather started McCaffrey Ford in nineteen twenty-four. His wife died giving childbirth to a second daughter. This man started the dealership, had a three-year-old child, and an infant to take care of. That's why McCaffrey Ford's not here anymore, he couldn't keep it up. So he sold his business to McFadden Ford, and then the building was sold to Miller Knuth, who remained in the building for a long time. These sisters came to the building for a connection to their family, and it's this type of building and type of structure that we keep that preserves our communities, which was previously unknown to this family. So I'd like you to continue to keep our historic fabric intact and be respectful of the people who contributed to our community. McCaffrey actually passed away from alcoholism about twenty years later, so life became pretty rough to him, but that's a part of our community history, it's a part of our fabric, a story we didn't know about. These women didn't know about it either, until they started doing some research. This is how we expect the building to look when we're done. This is an interior view of nineteen thirty. This is some of the plans that we've worked on recently to bring it up to speed. This is a floor plan of the apartment units that we plan on the second floor, and this is a cross-section of the building, showing how we're gonna get cars in, where we're gonna inhabit it. We've done enormous amounts of work to this property, and we're ready to develop it, probably within a couple of years, it will be done. I'm asking you to rescind the eminent domain, vote personally to keep our history intact and preserve our buildings, and allow, allow people to contribute to the community, instead of taking things away from them that can never, ever be replaced.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Brenneman. I am a civil structural engineer here in Omaha. I've been licensed since nineteen seventy, and I have been working on this building with Bob Perrin since two thousand and fourteen. I initially did the analysis of the structural system with the idea that we were gonna add some additional floors, and found that not only the structural system, the foundations, walls, and so forth, that it would accommodate three additional floors and a roof. Now, what makes this a little unique is that the building originally, even though you see four floors now, had a fifth floor, and that fifth floor was what is now the roof. And so it was heavily designed in order to accommodate the Ford dealership that was there. And then we've gone on top of that, using that as the floor, and then adding, as I said, three additional floors and a roof. The building is quite strong, very much accommodative, and it is part of the history, and thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Arnold Breslow, fifty-five twenty-eight Emly. Thank you for having this and discussing it and looking at it openly. My background is in construction, I owned City Glass for forty-five years. I retired, not full-time, but sort of, twenty years ago, okay? And at the time, I decided, well, I'd gotten into replacing windows and historical stuff, and really enjoyed what I was doing, and I thought, well, I'll get a building and it'd be a hobby. What was I wrong? Anyway, I bought the Cornish Mansion and the building known as the White House Apartments, which was right next to the Sun's Italy. It took me thirty years to get those buildings to where they are, and I'm still not done, but you could probably spend your lifetime doing it if you started at twenty. So what, the main thing I wanted to point out to you guys is you're talking about eminent domain, and it hasn't been used in Omaha, and even though it hasn't been used in Omaha, I'm gonna put something up, I don't know if it'll show or not. If I can get my fingers to work. This is what, in nineteen twenty-nine...
Slide down.
Whoop. Thank you. Nineteen twenty-nine downtown Omaha looked like without eminent domain. This property now looks like this. The black stuff that's blacked out, you could have done with a bomb, not any better. We have wiped out half of downtown history without eminent domain. When you use eminent domain, I believe the city has used it once, other than for streets. When you use eminent domain, you're opening a door that can't be closed, and what's done without it, you can imagine what it would have been done with it. Please do not use that as a means to take this property from a man who has spent several years working to develop a building. It takes a lot of time. If you do it without a lot of time, you end up spending much more than is possible to recoup in your lifetime. Based on my experience, this is really a big deal. It's not something to just, okay, we'll do it. You've got half a block of property. If you want to use it, use it, but don't take a good building, one of the best buildings down there, especially when he's kept the building secure predominantly windows and roofs, so it doesn't get damaged.
Thank you, Mr. Breslow.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Mark Welsh. I live at fifty-six eleven Howard Street in Omaha, Nebraska, and I would like you to slow this process down. I think that your plans for the future need time to come to sort of gel together. I went down to the Forty-Second Street facility some years ago and got a tour with Mark La Flore, and was, it was a pretty good facility then, I thought. They had closed the solitary confinement, it hadn't been used for years. I just talked to him briefly today, he said, oh, we've repurposed that now. So it, it sounds like that facility is, is still a viable... So it sounds like that facility is still a viable building, that should just be allowed to continue the good work that he and others are doing down there. Commissioner Borgeson earlier said that we want to, that we need to look at everything that impacts the youth. I couldn't agree more with that. That we need to look at how our families, our youth are being treated, how our schools are working. We need to reduce the number of kids that are going to these, to this facility. I think that's admirable, according to Mr. LaFleur. That has been happening since I talked with him some years ago. Commissioner Morgan, I appreciate hearing that you're not in a hurry. I'm sorry to hear about your surgery, sir. I know that's a painful stuff to go through, so. I do think that you need to take the time, and part of that taking the time is to rescind your, what would essentially be to condemn this property that we've talked about. Questions need to be asked and answered, that have not been asked and answered yet. You've gotten some, a new look at some information today, for the first time, it sounds like, and some people think it's the first time, others not the first time. I don't wanna get in the middle of that, but you need to look at more information, perhaps in new ways. And as a Republican, I just hope that you all keep our taxes down, keep our government smaller, not larger, and most importantly, as a Republican, a conservative Republican, I hope you will protect private property rights. That's what Republicans do. I hope you'll do that. And one other thing that, one of you, and I won't out them today, told me years and years and years ago, that when you hear a budget from government, when it's all done, you can count on it being twice what you first hear. So if that's still true today, like it was a decade or two ago, when that person told me that, you need to look at this cost real closely, and I'm shocked to learn that you have not seen a budget yet, for $120 million. What's up with that?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Zach Johnson. I own Johnson Deconstruct. I live at 1113 South 33rd Street. I was a tenant at Marcy Mason from April 2013 to January 2016. So as a tenant, I had several responsibilities, keeping, excuse me, keeping up with the snow removal, maintaining windows, doors, having them, keeping them operational. When we moved in down there, there is quite a bit of graffiti, it was nearly a blighted area, there was no development going on. This building was, you know, it is, it is a treasure. I work on several of these old buildings, and don't enjoy tearing them down. As a subcontractor at Marcy Mason, we, company, had about 550, 600 man-hours of removing superficial walls, all the contents that the core left, dirt, concrete from the basements. Every floor had contents. We had dozens of dumpsters removed, removing trash there. While we were a tenant, we had frequent interactions with the other tenants who were there. There was a painter, several people storing things. And then there was, the parking garages also had, or they, it was used as a parking garage as well. We salvaged materials out of the building, specifically for reuse within that building. And we were paid to bring materials into the building to be reused in the lobby. When I was there, from the beginning, I knew that there was going to be, it was going to be redeveloped, you know, primarily as there would be a lobby that had a offices, and there was always talk of going upwards, because the building was a good, strong building. So that's my, my history of the building, and I would urge you to rescind the eminent domain resolution. Thank you.
Question, is that appropriate, Chris?
Come on, he's still within-
What is, I'm surprised, we have, I have not heard of any tenants in the building, and tell me again, when you were there?
April 2013 is when we moved in.
Okay.
And then we moved out January 2016.
Huh. And there were other tenants as well?
Yeah.
And what were the occupations, or businesses, or whatever, that was in there?
Painters, other people, there was other people storing things within there.
Okay.
And then we shared the parking garage as, for parking.
Okay, the parking garage is inside, right?
Right.
Okay. Wow, okay. And, okay, how many tenants were there?
I don't know. They, I was the main long-term tenant.
Okay.
There were other parking tenants, I didn't know them, I just know that my guys and I got in their way frequently.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Carol Zacek. And first off, I want to thank Commissioner Boyle for proposing the rescinding of the eminent domain. That is my main reason for being here at first. However, I'm also a very frugal person. I believe that the Omaha taxpayers should be allowed to vote on this. It's such a huge project, and it's such a huge, very important part of our future, that we need to be heard. I think that there should be alternative proposals allowed, and competitive bidding. I have not seen any of that. And also, there needs to be more transparency, which you're all even agreeing to late in the game. More transparency in the decision-making, including, I think that there should be a panel, which I would happily volunteer my own time to be on that panel, so that you could have citizens involved in some of these decisions. And then last but not least, I want to mention, first off, I, little background here, I am an IATSE theatrical stagehand, so I'm a union member, and I am forced to follow parliamentary procedure and Robert's rules. Chris Rogers appeared last week on local TV stating that the adjoining youth center had been part of the strategic plan for 10 years. There was no mention of it. I got ahold of a copy of the strategic plan, I looked through it several times. There is no mention of it in the strategic plan whatsoever. What really angered me and disappointed me was that August 28th meeting, how Chris Rogers had people forcibly removed from that meeting. He does not follow parliamentary procedure or Robert's rules, in my opinion. Also, one thing about the fact that the adjoining building is supposed to reduce the number of juveniles, there's no evidence to support that. And I just don't think that there has been anywhere near enough research on this, concrete research, concrete evidence, to support any of these statements that have been made. So I really hope that rescinding the eminent domain would be a very good start in slowing down this entire procedure, that we all need more time. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've even got 32 seconds left.
Thank you. Who's next? For the record, I think I stated that the, they, the one stop had been talked about in the strategic plan for the last two years. We've been working on juvenile justice reform for the last 10, so let's want that to be known. Yes, ma'am? And since you're a first-time speaker, ma'am, can you please spell your last name? I've been asked to ask everybody that.
My last name is Cosentino Welsh, C-O-S-E-N-T-I-N-O-Welsh. And I'm the Democratic wife of this man behind me. So basically, I am very much for slowing this process down for all of us, including members of the community, such as myself, to learn more about what happens to a young person who is detained in these facilities. I was surprised to sit here today and listen, that some of you don't know how the young people are shuffled around. They're removed from their families, their support systems, which are psychologically vital to their well-being. They are geographically removed to centers. And along with those centers, I think we're all gaining a real awareness lately about how profit-making some of these detention centers are. Psychiatrists who are employed by these facilities, out of state, are reaping thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on one child when they counsel them. I've heard it here today, that we don't even have one. There are three months' waiting period. So where's this revenue all going? I think that it's time to take a really good, close look about the children, what's happening with the children, how are they being served? What can we do with a new facility that would address the needs of these children and their families? This is a community. Sometimes children get in trouble, and sometimes they need help. We need the community and family to be there to help. We don't need to ship our children off to another location we don't know anything about, while they charge thousands of dollars to do the things that we can do here. Thank you.
Ms. Cosentino Welsh, I'm sorry, we need your first name, as well, for the record. Thank you.
I think we're about out of time, so I'll make this real short. And I'll use the time to the other lady here.
We got 10 minutes, you're good.
Last week, I think I mentioned a few things about a P in the pod. There's three questions here. I vote for number two. I recommend you vote for number two.
Say your name for the record.
However, number three.
Say your name, say your name for the record.
I'm sorry, I was speaking before. My name is Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. All right, there's three questions there. I'm not a warrior. I recommend number two. Well, please vote for number two, so that we might get around to talking about number three. But as I understand proceedings, I can come back and say I'm against number one, and come back again and say I'm against number three. So I'm gonna take the P in the middle here.
No, Larry.
The P in the pot in the middle.
No, Larry.
Also, excuse me, sir, I have a document here.
Larry, let me clarify.
Excuse me, Chris, I have a document here that you should be interested in.
No, no, Larry.
From back in May of 2014.
Larry, please.
That talks about a specific plan, sir.
Larry, let me clarify what you-
My time is not over.
Oh, you get time?
Don't do that to me again.
Let me clarify.
The world heralds, wanted to know if I had a-
Larry. Larry, let me clarify. You're not gonna be able to speak on three different items. This is the one thing for that. You can still, I'm trying to clarify your rights.
Larry, we want you-
I'm overdue for a cigarette, okay?
Larry, we want you to talk.
Please.
My name's Catherine Cook. This will be real short. I've listened to Jim Kavanaugh. He's spent a lot of hours developing a plan that is better, cheaper, and smarter, and I think this is a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. Kathleen Jamrosy, 1614 South 93rd Avenue. And, okay, so, a lot of good has been said. I was here for the meeting last night. My background, just to be quick on this, I've worked at Boys Town. I've done the docent training at the Durham Museum, where I fell in love with the old buildings that we have torn down, which I recommend anybody go and check out some of the gorgeous photographs of the building, the buildings in our city that no longer exist. I also have a restaurant in the heart of the could-be-emerging Flatiron District. Bruce has been great showing up, Mr. Carpenter, to talk about the plans. However, when you go to the other cities and take a look, I guess I wonder if there is also a huge complex. What, I took pictures yesterday from 18th and Leavenworth, and there's concertina wire all the way down 18th. And what you have in the background is the Perrin Building, that we were talking about, taking by eminent domain. And so what we would have, that corridor looking towards our beautiful courthouse, is a blocks of detention. And because I have a family business, I have, my children now would like to run that restaurant and stay there for a long time. It is important to me, what happens to our neighborhood. I wanna thank the commissioners that have shown up to try and talk to us about their plan, and on first glance, the plan sounds great. We're talking about paradigm shifts and wraparound services, and without a doubt, it has to be frustrating for the commissioners that have worked long and hard on these issues, to have us coming in at the last moment and saying, but wait a minute, and get me up to speed here, and you have a whole lot of information I do not have. But it does feel to me that public discussion at this point, on something that is so very important for our kids and their families, I vote, or I would ask that you rescind the eminent domain, the resolution for eminent domain, to give the public a chance to talk about what is really going to be the most forward-looking thing we can do for our city, for our neighborhoods, and definitely for the kids. And I think that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And PJ, I hope you're feeling better. Hope to see you soon.
Thanks, Kathleen.
I mean, Commissioner Ward.
Anyone else?
My name's Carrie Mohiu-Din, 2005 South 118th Street.
Can you spell it?
I have a two-sided page here of notes. I'm very nervous. Good morning to all of you commissioners, and thank you for taking the time to hear me. I am one of the kids that was at the Douglas County Youth Center for many, many, many days. I had lots of stays at the Douglas County Youth Center. I now work, and have for the last 20 years, in the nonprofit sector. But I was one of the kids, I believe I was called a status offender. I was lost, I was self-injuring, I was a runaway. And my parents, despite what they really wanted to do, they had to turn over custody to me, to the county. So I became a ward of the state. And I spent a lot of days at the youth center. I was there with convicted criminals, waiting for, and this was 35 years ago, but there were kids waiting to go to Carney, or to York, the older kids. I found myself, it was, first of all, we have a beautiful campus down there that really could be developed. I mean, it's, that's a lot of space. So the one thing I know is, in my time between St. Joe's Hospital twice, Boys Town Campus, ultimately is where I ended up in graduating high school. Nova Therapeutic Community, and Geneva, Nebraska. And Geneva, Nebraska was a very depressing environment, but the one thing we got there was, three or four times a day, you got to walk outside the building and go to another building. And you got to see the trees, the leaves change color, the sunshine, and you got to spend just a few minutes outside. I also, by being at the Douglas County Youth Center as a young person, I was already in a position where I felt like I'd given up. I'm here, how much, how much worse could it get? Well, it could get worse if I was looking at the Douglas County Correction Center every single day. If I had already made it down to that community of convicted criminals, and that was where I was spending my time as a 13, 14, 15, and 16-year-old child. And so for me, I didn't feel like I had already just given up. I was at the youth center. To me, it didn't feel like I was down in a community of institutions. And there was, yeah, sure, you were schlepping back and forth, but I was not looking at the Douglas County Corrections. I was not looking at the courthouse. I was in a building with kids that were just waiting for placement in foster homes. I was with kids that were status offenders like me. I was with youngsters that had made some really bad decisions, and were waiting on a court date and a conviction. But there was a whole plethora of students and young people there, and I was one of them. And I really believe if I had to look at a- And I really believe if I had to look at a county jail every day, Douglas County Corrections, it would have completely changed my path. So I would urge you to please pause, take your time. There is no rush. You are dealing with children's perception of their future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
I don't know if I can talk that, but thanks, Carrie. I know how difficult it was for you to make that presentation. Just from listening...
Want to state your name?
Sorry, Maria Fernandez. I'd been up here several times. Just from listening to today's presentations, especially what Mr. Carpenter presented to the group here, I am frankly terrified that we would proceed just based on the amount of information he was able to share with us today, that we would take a wrecking ball to a perfectly, to a building that's not perfectly good right now but has incredible promise. I think it frankly, everything he said today suggests to us, we have to wait before we make a final decision. We have to go back to the drawing board and decide what exactly this facility is going to encompass. I had the good fortune to, to watch a documentary last week called Healing Justice. I don't know if the County Board of Commissioners has had the opportunity to watch that, but I would recommend that you have a public viewing of that documentary again with a second panel. It gives people an idea of the paradigm shifts we're looking at in the justice system. And if that's what we're working towards, brick and mortar will not change a thing. It's the programs, the programs, the treatment that is going to make a difference. And all these meetings have been more about the brick and mortar. That's the big objection. Put that money into programming, put that money into the true paradigm shifts that we're looking to implement. Essentially, that's all I have to say. And because of that, I think we need to vote in support of no eminent domain. The, the three issues that Mike Boyle recommended today. The three resolutions on the floor. Thank you.
Okay, we're at the 40 minutes. Let me ask, how many people want to testify pro? Left? Your last. Come on, sir. You're it, then we'll switch to the cons.
My name's Jared Alexander. I'm a cultural materials conservator in private practice here in Omaha. I live at 2202 South 40th. And I was brought to this issue in my capacity as a conservator for the preservation of civic heritage, and specifically the Old Market and Flatiron District, the preservation of these buildings and their significance here in Omaha. Over the last 11 weeks since we've been coming to these hearings, personally I've been pretty amazed at the, the level of effort and time that the community has put in, that the board has put in on both sides of this issue. I just wanna state the level of professionalism that's been shown by HCR. I have one exception, and that is the bullet point that, you know, we're inspiring civic pride. As a conservator, I have a difficulty understanding how that's possible when we're constantly, obviously, destroying our civic heritage. I also think it's pretty obvious the underlying issues of the care for the most vulnerable members of our society, the children, definitely need to be addressed. However, I also think that the use of eminent domain on this building was a bit cart before the horse. I think we all do need to take a breath, and it is very hard when you've put a decade or more of effort into a project. But it's worth the time and effort to get this right. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll switch to those individuals that...
Mr. Boyle's question.
Mr. Perrin, I'll let you do it at the other piece, but I'm gonna stay consistent with it. So, yeah, I'll let you come back up when he, when the motions get seconded. At this point, individuals that want to speak against the three motions, please come You speaking for and against?
I'm answering Commissioner Boyle's questions.
You'll get a chance to do that.
Okay.
Leo Lewis, 4439 Commercial Avenue. So, I'm gonna say the unpopular thing, because most people here want to talk about community discussion, postponing, blah, blah, blah. I was also a incarcerated young person at one point in time. I've been to the Douglas County Youth Facility. I waited on 42nd and Leavenworth. I've waited three hours, missed my lunch, came back and got my little bag after I went to court. So I know what it's like to wait for the paddy wagon and then to wait to go back in the paddy wagon. It's no fun. So being able to have access to all my resources in one stop is actually something that I look forward to. But some people don't understand, even if there was a youth facility that held 100 students and then there was another one that held 48, that's 148. That's 148th of our youth who are here localized, who are not being transported out to Arizona or wherever else outside of the state. They would be here to receive those services, but people seem to not hear that part of the conversation. I really don't wanna get into that dialogue more so than I wanna say that having this discussion right now with three resolutions that I have to talk about is very difficult to do within three minutes. I can't say that I am for eminent domain, because I'm not. I also can't say that I'm for not having public discussions, because I actually encourage public discussion. This is what I do all the time. But I do have a question about the renovation of the Douglas County Youth Facility, which I haven't heard much about at all during this discussion all day. There's been no talk about what that renovation will look like, what the building structure or additions will be. So I'd really like more information about that. And I felt that this was the best way to actually highlight that issue, is to be an opponent of these so-called resolutions, because I can't actually be a full opponent of all three all at once. But number three is really what I'm more concerned with. That's the only comments I have to make.
Thanks.
Could you say your name again?
Leo Lewis.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down.
Hi, my name is Sammie Jackson, S-A-M-M-I-E, 5335 South 30th Street. I am here to speak for the building of the new juvenile center. As a mother of four, a single mother of four, three of my, one of my kids was the only one that got in trouble. The way he got into the system was when he was hanging around some kids carrying a BB gun, and someone saw them and called the police, said they was pointing a gun at the cars as they go by. So that's how my son ended up in the system. Other than that, never had a problem out of him. I mean, was a good kid. And from there, he went from being on probation, he didn't do right on probation, he went from being from probation to being put in the, the youth center. From the youth center, he got out. He didn't wanna act right, he didn't wanna listen to me. I swear that there's gonna be somebody you're gonna listen to, and when that time come, you is not gonna like it. And trust and believe, when he went in front of Judge Circovich, he didn't like it. She sent him straight to Clarendon. He was there for two and a half years. He spent his 15th birthday, his 16th birthday, in Clarendon because carrying this BB gun, and he did not wanna listen to me. And that was something hard for me, because I never spent a day without my kids. It was hard, even harder for him. I couldn't do nothing but cry. Okay? But I had to, they, they called me from the Clarendon saying, "You need to speak to your child." So I had to speak to him to get him to go along with the program, so he doesn't be in there no longer than what he had to be. And he did. And I'm thankful of that. And he got out. When he got on that probation, the probation man told him, "Hey, when you get in trouble, you're not going back to the juvenile, you're going to the big boy house." And from that day on, my son did good. And I'm proud of him for doing that. And I'm proud of the probation man for telling him that. So I believe this here would be a good thing. Lot of people would benefit from this. You know what I'm saying? The location of where it's at now, the location you have to come down and speak with the probation officer, or speak, have, you know, with someone in the judge's system or whatever, that's, that saves a lot of time. Everything would be in one place. You wouldn't have to go through that. The parents, especially the ones that don't have the transportation, to get from one place to the other. So I'm for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Bergen, 5904 Henninger Drive. I'm here to support the new center. For some reason, all my life I've done transportation in North Omaha. Well, I'm a president of three neighborhood associations. And what I'm basically saying is, I have dealt with a lot of single parents, and most of them are women. And as a single parent who raised seven kids by myself, I can understand some of their struggles. Main one is transportation, just like she said. We was in the meeting yesterday. Transportation for people in North Omaha is hard. I take people out to Regency to see therapists for their kids, lawyers offices. Out of place, all I'm saying is, have everything in one place would benefit us more. I, I'm here, I'm not for eminent domain, but I'm for change. And I know a lot of people saying that's not good, but the change is good sometimes. This is gonna be historical for, for, for our city. To build something like this, we need it. Everybody, I know it's all about money for some people, but when you look at the, the parents, the things they're going to, to try to take their kids, to go visit them down in Kansas City. My, my grandson was one of them people they wanted shipped to Arizona, which his mom wouldn't have had no way to get out there to see. You know what I'm saying? Which, I think he needed to stay in the system longer than what he was in there, for some reason, and all the trouble he caused her. The things he said he was gonna do to his brothers and sisters, to get the system to just, he was, he was a good talker. He could talk his way out of having an ankle bracelet on to go to school. He said, "Well, I don't think I should have that on to go to school, but you did a crime. Why not, shouldn't you have that on there? You should go and let the other kids see this is what happened when you do things." But you know what they did? He cut it off. They let him keep it off. He runs the street, do what he wants to do. He doesn't come home on time. No one, none of the penalties for whatever he's done wrong have been brought back to him at all. But all I'm saying, I support this new system, this new center. For some reason, like I said, everything is in one spot. How great would that be for people in North Omaha, South Omaha? You know, someone told me, they said, "Well, what do you do with, what do you..." And I hate to say this, the Caucasians, "What do they do when they out west? What their kids, what do they do with them?" You know what they said? They send them to places where they can get help. Our kids don't have that option. We don't have the money to do that. You know? But that, like I say, just to keep it in one spot, I'll be, oh, I wish they would just do that. I love it. And I'm gonna do everything I can to bring it up in, in the community to more of my people that I know, because they can't get here today, but most of them work. You know, I'm just gonna leave it at that, and I support it, one of its say.
Your name one more time, please.
Eric Bergen.
Bergen, B-U-R-G-I-N.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else?
Josh Hennington, 5113 Franklin. I think we've, I'm, I'm glad that I think we've sort of gotten to the point now where there seems to be a bit of consensus that the current DCYC is not okay. And I think the question is sort of narrowed down to, do we do something downtown, or do we do something on 42nd Street? And I think the, the first thing that we need to realize is that this idea that we're gonna rehab or renovate or do these sorts of things to DCYC, once you tear out the adult jail parts that just happen to hold kids, there's not gonna be anything left. You're building a new facility from scratch on 42nd Street. That's, whatever that's gonna cost, I don't know, but that's, I think if the board wants to go that way, they need to do it with eyes open, that you're talking about building a, a brand-new facility. And no matter how nice it is, no matter how best practices or trauma-informed it is, it's still not co-located. And so you're still putting kids in shackles, putting them in a van, and driving them across town. Doesn't matter how nice the building is. And we saw Greg Hepburn earlier today. Imagine if Greg was down the hall from the public defender and the county attorney and the probation officer and somebody from Heartland Family Services, so he didn't have to call and wait to get a voicemail back, he could just go talk to them. And so that's, that's the kind of benefit you get from co-location, that you're not gonna see, no matter what you build, on 42nd Street. The other part of this is, there's been a lot of talk about community resources or all these other sort of things. There was just a, the Pew Charitable Trust just did a, released a study on, on facilities all across the country that have closed juvenile facilities as we, as we have reduced the level of detention. And what they do with the savings is then they can reinvest it into alternatives to detention and community-based resources. The thing about secure facilities is there's a lot of overhead. Most of those costs are fixed. And so if you reduce the population by one kid or five kids, you don't save really any money. The staffing level's the same, the overhead's the same. Until you start closing facilities, you start closing buildings down, you don't have that money to reinvest then into the system and develop those resources. And so if you're running a 100-bed facility with 40 kids in it, you're still running a 100-bed facility, and you're still carrying most of those overhead costs. So I think that's, that's something that, if you really wanna realize those gains that we've made over the past few years to reduce those levels of population, it needs to be a modern, trauma-informed, well-designed, appropriately-sized facility in the most efficient place possible. And so I think it would be a mistake to try to do that at 42nd Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike McDonald, State Senator, Legislative District Five. Thank you Chairman Rogers for the offer earlier to, to testify, and also for your efforts today to, to run a, a professional meeting. I know it's not easy. Commissioner Borgson, the time and the information you've given me on this issue, I appreciate it. The passion you have and the dedication, I appreciate. As a state senator, I'm here to offer anything I can do from the state level as you, as you go through this process with programming. I know our goal is all the same. You've had children that have, have made mistakes. We want them to be able to correct those mistakes and be the best version of themselves, and help their family at the same time. I agree on the one location. I believe that is the, the best route to go. Also, I'd like to thank Bruce Carpenter, the work he's done through HDR, but not specifically on this issue. Bruce Carpenter, right now, and his team at HDR is volunteering to help us with a project on 20th and Lake. It's an old fire station. It belongs right now to the Black Professional Firefighters Association. That fire station does not reflect the best history of the city of Omaha. Up to 1956, it was segregated. We wanna make sure people don't forget that. That bad history of the city of Omaha. At the same time, with Bruce Carpenter and his team from HDR, we're trying to put the time and the money and the effort into that building, so we can develop it into an education center through the Black Professional Firefighters, to educate all of us in the community, but also to encourage us, those kids in the future, that want to possibly be firefighters, police officers, possibly get involved in the trades, whatever it might be. Don't take that bad path. Take another option, where we're not talking about juvenile justice. So I appreciate the, the time and, and effort you're putting into this. I support the one location, and I also offer anything I can do as a state senator from my office in, in Lincoln, anyway I can, I can help today, or tomorrow, or in the future on this issue or any other issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Very much.
You're coming, you're coming against...
I'm gonna answer questions.
No, you'll get that time, it's not that time yet. Anybody, anybody here testifying against the three?
Paul Fileman, 5152 Jones Street. A retired social worker, worked for UPS for a few years. The, I just wanted to ask, I haven't never done this before, but having worked in mental health for 25 years, I've been doing some research on the status of the criminal justice system, and it's, it's not doing real well, if you look at the situation in Lincoln and the recidivism rate and so forth. So I was kinda wondering, with the, the program that you guys are... of wondering, with the, the program that you guys are proposing over on Forty Second Street, and then the one downtown, I heard a couple numbers. One is the length of stay was fifty days, and then eight days.
Ours is fifty.
Okay. But that's what your goal is, is to be able to, so you're saying that the new model would do it eight, eight days? So, just help me out. I'm just, what, what are you doing? It must be a pretty innovative model to do that. So, are, are there ancillary services that are all being brought in to, to get them out of the facility, but give them what, home services or support? Or, I guess I'm, I'm just confused about how that all works. It sounds great. I mean...
Most of the conversation has been, is that building a building will solve it all. Building a building will not solve it all. There's also programming that's happening right now, and programming that'll continue to happen into the future. The issue is, is that, and this is my perspective on it, the conversations you just talked, that we just talked about, about mental health. There are studies that say that kids with those symptoms in a detention facility get worse. That's why you cannot separate the building from being part of the programming, because for all it's said, that facility was built sometimes, and my understanding is, and I'm gonna have to get the correct numbers from Jerry, it was built for thirteen million dollars. It looks like a jail. It was built before science was better. Now, when you're going to build a new facility, that is part of the, well, a new, a new justice, a new court facility, you cannot neglect that that is part of the programming that comes with it. So, the building's been emphasized, like we're saying it's the cure-all, the be-all. It's not. The programming will have to go. That's, the programming will allow you to house the forty to sixty kids.
Well, they will be there at that building?
Yes.
For, but they were, you're talking about eight days, a goal of eight days to be...
The goal, Ramsey did it in eight days, because Ramsey's been a, a JDI member. They've implemented programs. They've changed a lot of the ways they, they've done things. But also, as the young lady mentioned, it came up early, status offenders. Status offenders no longer can be there. And there's legislative changes that have been in the law that says, a ruling by a judge now that a kid is harmed to self can no longer sit in detention center. A kid that's there for waiting placement, which you saw today in some of those numbers, in a year from now, a kid waiting placement will no longer be able to sit in that facility.
So that's the goal, is just to get folks out of there as quickly as possible?
Yes.
Point of personal privilege, please. JDAI is Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, and perhaps we should be looking at the mean instead of the average?
That's the number that's there. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just very last, my name is George Chola, one zero zero four Farnham Street. As a matter of disclosure, I am working with Burlington Capital, who is one of the companies that has been selected to shepherd the, the current project forward. And I'm not really gonna say much about it. I wanted to read to the public record a letter that Brad Ashford wrote to the chair, and asked me to share with the county board regarding his support of this project. Dear Chair Borgeson, I have been working on juvenile justice issues for many years. With the assistance and leadership of Douglas County, the judiciary and the Douglas County Attorney, we passed significant legislation to reform juvenile justice by decreasing the need for detention and adopting evidence-based programming. What has always been missing is a facility that will address in a comprehensive manner the needs of our youth. I know we have the team in state, county, and city government to address these needs. A new facility will increase efficiency and effectiveness of their efforts. I have worked on many downtown projects. I understand how deeply people care about the city and its future. I understand that there are businesses and developers in the area who have raised issues about the location and the function of the new juvenile justice center. No project will ever satisfy everyone, but I am convinced that this project must proceed. In this regard, I am absolutely convinced that housing juveniles in the current detention center or somewhere else will decrease the effectiveness of combining the juvenile justice functions in one location. In this regard, I am confident the concerns of the neighborhood can be addressed appropriately. The project is long past due. In the spirit of projects such as the Buffett Cancer Center and other public-private partnerships in this community, this project, both the new facility and the programs administered there, will help save the lives and futures of many of our troubled youth, promote public safety, and enhance and improve the surrounding neighborhoods. I just wanted to read that for public record. I couldn't have stated it any better than Senator Ashford has indicated. And that's my comments there. Thank you.
Anyone else against the motion? Okay. With that, what I'd like to do is ask Commissioner...
You got it.
Hmm?
It's close.
He's gonna come up when he's seconded. So what I, what I'd like to do is, when the motions are first and seconded, if Mr. Perrin, you'll be able to come up during that period, because the first one is where you're at in that degree. I'd like to do is, ask the, this, as I said before, we've debated this, if, I'd ask the commissioners to be relatively brief in what they, what the statements they want to say, unless, for instance, Commissioner Boyle's gonna ask Mr. Perrin to answer a question. If there's any questions that needs to be answered, this is definitely the piece. So with that, item one was read into it. We'll go to item, to the Finance Committee, item two, resolution to rescind the Douglas County's July tenth, twenty eighteen resolution and directed the county to proceed with eminent domain of Marcy, Marcy property located on four two zero South Eighteenth. Is there a motion?
Yes.
I make the motion.
There's a second. There's a motion, a second. Mr. Perrin.
All right. Still Bob Perrin, yes. Commissioner Boyle, there's been leases in the building for a long time. It's been fully utilized ever since the day I bought it, and we haven't turned leases in in protection of the privacy of the people that are using it. But we have research scientists in there. We have craftsmen in there. We have recycling operations going on, and those things have been going on for a long time. A lot of research activities going on. And in terms of the square footage, the whole project, the county already owns forty thousand square feet of footprint land that's contiguous. You know, the dot com building, and the old OHA, and then the parking lot, those two are connected by a forty-foot section. So we don't need to take this ten thousand square foot footprint and destroy an old building in order for everything to be built within that forty thousand square feet. Those are the, and, and Commissioner Morgan, one time you asked me a question, how is the building being used? And it's always been occupied, but you did note that water hasn't been hooked up. And that's because the side of the water line is about a five hundred dollar a month connection fee every month. So we're importing water instead of paying that large fee to, to flush three toilets. And we have porta-potties in there that take care of everybody that needs to be taken care of. So we're not using sewage, we're not using public water, but we've had electricity on day one, and the use has been low because people aren't in there for long periods of time. They will come in and do a little bit of research and then leave, or a little bit of work and then leave. So it's more of a job site-type function, but it's been active. No one knew it because of the aluminum foil wrapped around the outside. But if you look at the city security cameras, you'll see trucks and vehicles going in and out of that building all the time, all day long. Do you have any questions?
Thanks.
I, I do have a question. Mr. Perrin, you know, I, I'm not necessarily, although I drive by your building every day, I'm not, I haven't been necessarily a, you know, a lover of the building. I haven't really, because the windows are boarded up and so forth. I mean, that's just the way it was, when, when you took over. But I am surprised, because all I've heard up until today was that the building was not occupied, that, you know, it was just empty and sitting around. And I've even heard people, people say, "Well, you're just out to make a buck." Well, I said, "That's the American way. If that's what he's doing, I have no problem with it." So whatever you end up doing. But I think that what we heard today says to me that there's, there's no time, there's nothing lost, no time lost. If we vote to back off the eminent domain, it can always be refiled again. I mean, I, I just heard you say that you're hoping to redevelop the building within two years. Now, we're not gonna wait two years, but we would, I hope, again, talking to you again if we decide that, you know, we, we do need to take it for some reason. But, and eminent domain is a really serious matter. We all feel that way. No one takes this lightly. And I was trying to think back, the last time I was involved, and I can't remember one. They're so serious. But in any event, I don't want to take any more time, but I respect your ownership. I appreciate the information that, for me, is, is new today. And it means a lot to me that you came down and that you spoke and so forth. So thank you.
Okay.
I would like, if we're, are we ready for a vote or not?
You will.
Well, this, this isn't, this isn't easy, because first of all, there, you know, there are some personalities, and some things have been frayed here and there, and civility's been called on, and the lack of civility and all the rest. And I've been probably one of the offenders as well. You know, it isn't really easy to say that I made a mistake, but I've had to do that to Ann all my life. So, anyway, I think I made a mistake. I should not have, I rushed to judgment when I moved to, when I was on the building commission that we called for this condemnation, and also here again. I really did not have all the information that I need. And today, again, we got more information. And I, you know, there is some confusion out there, first of all, about the programs, what they are. And, you know, also confusion about what happens if this, these, this operation is moved to Forty Second and Woolworth. First of all, what I see there is one or two courtrooms. You know, when we renovated the adult facility, we built a courtroom, and every judge told us, "We're not going there. Don't bother with it." Well, it's in use every day. And I'd like to see us do one or two courtrooms down on Forty Second Street. The judges, believe it or not, could drive there, along with the attorneys could drive there. And we need to tell metro area transit, they're gonna have to come together with some really efficient, often run every fifteen minutes, small buses or something, out to Forty Second Street and cover areas where people live. The bus system is a whole nother issue. It is abhorrent. That's all I'll say about that. It's nonexistent. So in any event, I think what we need to do, the, the services that would be provided at Forty Second Street are identical to the services that I envision, or all of us, I believe, envision for Eighteenth and Howard. Why that gets separated, I don't know. The building out there has a gymnasium. It has some grass nearby. It is, has an open air area. It is not near the adult facility, which I know has to be shielded and supposedly will be with this, this new project on Eighteenth. But I really want us all to really take a step and really examine ourselves, and have we really answered all the questions to the community? I'll speak for myself. No, I haven't. And we need to have many more meetings. We involve, and today we were very fortunate to have the parents of children who've been there. We've also had people who've been there themselves, very courageous comments made today that were really terrific from people who've experienced it. And I, and I think that we need to pull back and try to make a decision based on what's best for the children, and look at it fully. Now, it may turn out, it may turn out, and it may turn out, that what's on Eighteenth Street is the best. I'm not sure. But I really admit to you that I didn't explore it to the fullest that I should have. And you have to ask yourself, have you? And I don't think we have. I mean, I think it's, you know, we heard from property owners, we heard, and I, I don't care whether the company doesn't own some of the buildings nearby. I don't care about all that. I think it's, I drive by there all the time. Ann and I used to live in West Omaha on Thirty-seventh Street, and now I live downtown on Tenth. And I drive by, that is my way out of the old market. I drive to Howard and go west, you know, to Forty Second, to Thirty-Eighth Street or something. But anyway, in all seriousness, I see that building every day, and I know that, you know, see the, the beautiful flat iron building. I know the Standard Royal Building next door. So many parking lots, good grief. And then there's the building, I forgot the name of it, the nice white building that's vacant on the next block. We have some real potential there. Some really neat things could happen. And I just don't want to rush to judgment, and I feel like we are. So I hope you'll please consider, this is not really, it is rescinding, but this doesn't mean we can't do it again. And I know that I'm in the minority, and I'm expecting an unfavorable vote. But I'd like to ask you to consider, give us some breathing room. Let's not rush, rush this through. Let's not move forward with this, with this project, to this extent. Let's not condemn the building. So I hope that you'll vote yes, and give us a little room to maneuver additionally to these other resolutions as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I'm also in favor of rescinding the eminent domain and slowing this process down. We should not be taking private property. And the public is not in support of this, as you have heard from the numerous public hearings that we've held. We're held here last night, and we're held here this morning. People that spoke in favor of this this morning primarily are paid to do this project. This document that was presented by one of the people who are paid to do this project is a promotion of this project by someone with the vested interest in the project. Public's not paid to be here, but they keep showing up. And numbers, that should tell us something about how the community views this. So let's do this right, not quick. Let's do this with better, smarter, cheaper alternatives, and let's put it on the ballot and vote. Thanks.
Seeing nothing further, there's a motion, a second. Mr. Clerk, you ready?
Yes.
Please vote.
I vote yes for repeal.
Motion fails. Commissioners Boyle and Kavanaugh voting yes. All their commissioners already no.
Item two, Youth and Services, item two, resolutions to postpone the proposed juvenile justice center so that all options can be discussed publicly, including location, and requiring a vote of the people on the bond issue. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, thank you very much. The, I want to just say this, that the services that would be offered at Forty Second Street are the same, again, I can't emphasize this enough, as the services that would be on Eighteenth Street. I really feel that we have not, and it's my, I'll take responsibility for that, along with others, but I take it myself, that we have not done enough to explain what it is, what the programs are. There's some terrific programs that we've been working on. Commissioner Borgeson and Commissioner Chris Rogers
Rogers.
Have, have put together, that are leaders, and of course Commissioner Duda as well, have brought around some really terrific programs that do drive down the population. And we need to expand those and, and really give that a real good house. We need to have a one-stop place where all of these things are located. There's no doubt about it. There's just a discussion about where should the one-stop be. And I really think that we need to get much more information about it. Every, I'm astounded by the numbers that come down, and the civility of the speakers who come down and make the, make the case for asking questions. Last night, a young woman said, "What are these programs?" So I gave her my cellphone, said, "Call me," and I'm gonna try to get some information to her. And it is really important, there's a lot of, not misinformation, but lack of information. And frankly, I'll say again, I take responsibility for that, because I'm on the board, and we should have, and I should have done a better job getting out there. But we have a chance to step back. As Commissioner Morgan said earlier, it's not any big deal to rush. We don't need to rush. I am concerned now that we're on a path to continue to try to take this building. But it still doesn't mean that we can't back up and involve the community, involve CASA, involve parents of children who are in the system. We heard one today. We heard from a, a young lady, a great courageous person, who spoke about her ordeal in that system and the mistakes she made. She's obviously done a terrific job. I know of a young man, this happened a couple of years ago. There was a, we had a lot of people coming down to talk about juvenile court. And there was a woman grandmother who came down, who talked about her grandson. It was a horrible situation. Her daughter was a prostitute, is a prostitute. She had five children. And on one Christmas Day, a set of twin girls, a couple of years old, were taken out of their home without any warning by law enforcement. Those kids were placed in foster care. Anyway, the, the child that I was involved with, she was talking about, had been through a whole lot of things, including abuse and all sorts of things at the hands of foster parents, and terrible, terrible things happened to that child. And she came down close to Christmas, and she met with us, and Mary Ann was there and others as well. And she said, she was notified by the people who were taking care of her grandson, that we haven't got anybody to bring him home. He was in, I'm not gonna name the city, but he was not in Omaha. He was about an hour and a half away from Omaha. And he had no way home. So I'm sitting there, and I'm thinking, you know, boy, that is really crummy. And finally, I said, "Hey, look, you know, I'll pick him up." So I'm not trying, saying this to get any, any credit. So anyway, her, her, the fellow that she lives with, he got off work, and the two of us went. I didn't want to go pick up a juvenile by myself. So we drove out, and we picked him up, picked up this kid, and drove him back to Omaha. And I found him on the way to be very bossy and very intelligent, and very well able to express himself. He said, first thing, I said, "I want to get a cup of coffee." He said, "No, we're gonna go this way to get Omaha." Wait a minute. And so we finally got the cup of coffee, and we bought him some kind of a treat to set And so, we finally got the cup of coffee and bought him some kind of a treat to settle him down okay. We arrived in Omaha, that, that, the man who lived with his grandmother bought him a, an actual, a real thing, a telescope, which was the real thing, not some plastic thing. Bought him a microscope, the real thing, not plastic. And I was fortunate enough to have dinner with that family in their home, along with a person from the Department of Health and Human Services who tracked that kid around. Every time he walked to one room, she'd follow him and sit down and walk around, and it's pretty annoying, but anyway, she did. And at the end of the day, he, you know, after looking, I was very impressed at his skill at these new gifts that he received from, from this man. And anyway, then he left, he left and went back, and I went with him and we drove up there. And when I got into this facility, I saw a woman about twenty-five monitoring in a very dark setting, this house with, at a crummy part of the city, horrible part of the city, all rundown, couches in most front yards. And anyway, I went in and so I said, and I saw young adults sitting on the floor, working things, I saw them playing games, nothing really very useful going on, and although it's what kids do. And I said, "I wanna see this boy's room." And she said, "What do you mean?" I said, "I wanna see where this kid's staying." And so, she reluctantly, I kinda bullied my way in, reluctantly went and opened the door, and this little boy had a mat, some kind of a mat on the floor, and his, all of his belongings were stuffed into a box. That's not right. Anyway, we have a chance to do some things for children. We have to interrupt what's going on. And the leadership of Commissioner Borgeson, so many commissioners on here that are, didn't vote for this recension, but Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Rogers particularly, those three particularly, have done an incredible job in bringing us to this point to focus. But we need to hear more from the people and we need to consider fully what we're doing, and a delay of some sort won't kill this. So, I hope that you'll all please vote, and I'm sorry to take so much time, but it's important. So, I hope that you'll please vote to postpone the, the project. And we can insert a date if someone's uncomfortable with the word postpone. Thank you.
That's a motion. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
There's a motion, there's a second. There's a second.
My second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. We do need to pass this motion, we do need to slow down. We do need to redo the property at Forty Second Street that we own, rather than take the property downtown that we don't. We do need to take the best interest of the children to put them on a campus that more closely resembles the educational institutions they've come from and hopefully are going back to. And we do need to have a vote of the people, for no other reason than it's democratic, but it also captures us a much better interest rate, as Commissioner Boyle pointed out, by using our triple A rating rather than the building commission's double A rating. That's millions of dollars on a project that is probably way over the hundred and twenty million that you heard from HDR here today, and probably one of the reasons we're not seeing any numbers from them. That's a big property tax increase. So, let's do this better for the children. Let's do this cheaper, using our own triple A bond rating. And let's do this smarter for all concerned. This is a big step in the right direction, I commend Commissioner Boyle for taking it. And it's important that we slow down this juggernaut, because it will get us a worse, more expensive, and except for the people that are gonna make money off of it, not very smart solution to a problem facing us. Thanks.
Seeing nothing, nowhere for discussion, there's a first and a, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Duda, sorry.
Thank you. Just to clarify, and I'll try to be quick on this, the difference in the bond rating is really the difference between Douglas County's bond rating and the City of Omaha's bond rating. The building commission is a hybrid of the two, gets the lower of the bond ratings. Well, there's, the City of Omaha's bond rating isn't that bad, really. There's, there's a difference anywhere of five to ten basis points typically, between the City of Omaha's bond rating and Douglas County's. Over the life of this loan, that will probably end up being less than a million dollars of difference in interest. If there is any philanthropy that is encouraged and brought out by going the scenario, the route that seems to be proceeding, as opposed to just a public vote, it would take only a million dollars of philanthropy to wipe out that difference of interest. And I am confident that there will be a lot more philanthropy involved than that. Thank you.
So, just on that point, because I made an inquiry of this exact point from our finance director, Mr. Lorenz, and he says, and I quote in his response, that the difference would result in a difference of approximately one million to two million in total debt service over the life of the bonds.
With that, there's a motion to second. You ready? Please vote.
I vote to postpone.
Motion fails. Commissioner Boyle and Kavanaugh voting yes, all their commissioners voting no.
Item three, resolution to renovate the Douglas County Youth Center to accommodate the county board's desire for a modern juvenile detention facility that incorporates best practice in juvenile form. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I guess I'd like to say, just 'cause you're not Irish, doesn't mean you can't vote to support these resolutions. Anyway. Well, I think the resolution to renovate is, I, I guess I wouldn't wanna make a bet on how this is gonna come out. But I, I know you're voting your conscience, I respect that. I just am disappointed, frankly, in myself, that I got us to this point, 'cause I contributed greatly to, to causing this to happen. So, I, I will just call, I'll make a, a motion that we approve that resolution, that services at this Douglas County Youth Center will, will be, would be identical to what we're offering on Eighteenth Street with courthouse there and, excuse me, a courtroom there and so forth, so it, and increased and finally, efficient transportation. So, I make, I make that motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes, we held a hearing here last night, many of you probably saw that in the media, where we offered an alternative proposal and offered numbers, and the numbers are stark because the proposal for the cell block downtown that HDR is pushing, as close as we can determine, they haven't come forward with final numbers, hopefully they will, is thirty-seven million dollars. And the proposal to redo Forty Second Street with a vote of the people and a triple A bond rating is about fourteen million dollars. So, it's a big difference and the savings can be spent on the children. Savings can be spent on all these programs that you're hearing about, but they always seem to be just around the bend, over the horizon, never seem to show up. Well, we can deliver those if we don't squander all the money on bricks and mortars and do what the resolution talks about, take our own facility, not somebody's private property, and do it right, smart, cheaper, and better. Thanks.
Jerry, can you come down real quick?
I thought maybe you misspoke.
No, no.
Jerry Leahy, Public Properties.
Tell me what it costs to build the current facility.
At the Youth Center, Forty Second? That bond, that bond was floated in ninety-four, ninety-five, sixty thousand square feet, in addition to the existing thirteen million dollars.
In addition to the existing facility, thirteen million?
That was the addition to the existing.
So, assuming that the other cost of the original piece?
We have a thirty and a sixty, ninety thousand square feet.
Okay. My point with that is, I'm not an architect and I'm not a, a construction designer, but most of all, us has dealt with homes and other things that you know, certain places and certain conditions, it makes no use to rehab them. If this, if it's thirteen million dollars for the addition that's on there, by the time you do something to some degree, you can build something new. That's, that's a fact. That is a fact. And even if you are a modern homeowner, this is the best analogy I can think of, you will not build a home with a detached garage. So, the question was asked in the paper, would you live next to a facility? I wanna answer with Mark. I don't know if I would, but that facility, I would live next to it. But in building it, and building a courthouse, there's no way you would look at the overall program, it's like building a house with a detached garage. So, the only point I'm making with this is, reasonably, if it costs thirteen million dollars for an addition of beds, do you think you're gonna come out cheaper renovating that? There is no way on earth. None. So, I just make that point. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Chris, and commissioners, what I'd like to say into the public, do you think that was adequate to discuss the alternative? I mean, we've had months of, it seems like months of discussing the project at Eighteenth and Howard, and now we just finished about, I don't know, generously, I'll say, five minutes of discussion on the alternative. You know, and we're not talking about a detached garage, we're talking about an enclosed garage, we're talking about one building with air, I don't know how many times I have to repeat it, it is the same facilities, the same services we're offering at a Forty Second Street, but there is this block that it's gonna be totally different, that it's totally deficient, and it's just not the case. So, all I'm saying, you know, this is what's, what is one of the frustrations, is that we have, are not willing to hear fully and vet fully and listen to people fully about, you know, what is really the alternative? So, we don't know the cost, we don't know, we've never, I tried to get some money, only twenty thousand dollars to Mr. Kavanaugh, and the board refused to consider it, to come up with what an alternative would be at, at Forty Second Street physically. And so, anyway, I'm very disappointed in that aspect of it, and I didn't have anything to do with that, except that I asked that it be done. So, I'm disappointed that we're really just shutting down on this, and we're gonna do this. I've got a, something I could say, but I don't wanna say it because the cameras are running, but it, so I don't give a damn, I guess is what I'm saying instead. I do, but I don't think we do.
Let me, you through?
I'm through, believe me.
Let me, let me respond to you that I disagree with your comment in respects to the resolution is to rehab the existing facility.
Of course it is.
My comment was on asking the cost of the existing facility that's there. That's, that's totally in, in there. So, I, I didn't go off point. If you, if you disagree, we disagree on that, but just know, that's in, that's in realm.
Chris, I'd like to speak when you're through.
We can speak.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you.
Chris.
Yeah, that was a newly constructed addition in nineteen ninety-six. By the way, it was done with the county's bounding authority. That aside, this is not new construction, this is a redo of Forty Second Street. If you had taken the time to come to the public meeting last night, or any of the public meetings that we've had on the alternative proposals, you would've seen the footprint of the alternative proposal, not new construction, which is, as HDR could tell you, if they ever come forward with a budget, astronomically higher than redoing something. And if you wanna put it in house terms, it's astronomically higher to, to build a new house than it is to redo an old house, I've done it. And what we're talking about is fourteen million to redo what already exists, not to build it over, but if you wanna mix apples and oranges in people's minds, that's what you would lead them to believe. The reason we hold these public hearings is so that you can hear it straight. And last night was that meeting, and that was not attended by you, and that's probably one of the reasons that you don't have a firm grip on what the alternative, as Commissioner Boyle pointed out, contains, after a thirty-second directed question to Mr. Leahy.
In all due respect, Commissioner Kavanaugh, let me check you, because for ten years, I've been working on this project, I'll tell it in my sleep, I can tell you intimately what's there. So, I didn't need to come to the meeting last night to understand that facility, because I've understood it and worked on it from when it was two hundred and fifteen kids in twenty sixteen till now. So, in all due respect, as I told you before, I expect your, I, I respect your enthusiasm for the domain, but I don't challenge your intelligence on the project, and you, you're surely not gonna challenge mine on this, 'cause I gravely understand this.
Chris?
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, what I wanna say is that you did suggest that this fourteen million was out pie in the sky. The point is, we don't have any data to say what it actually would cost. And if the new facility at Eighteenth and Howard costs thirty-seven million, then let's do it for thirty-six million at Forty Second Street. So, we really haven't done that, and I do wanna give a little more perspective too, because I've been involved in this for a long time as well. And I was chair of the committee for the Youth Center when a young person committed suicide there. And I saw how that facility functioned, and I was involved with them, and I had been on a very active basis, and I saw the horrible situation that took place. And to the credit of the news media, I got them to agree to blackout information that a child had taken his life, because there's so many children there and the parents would panic. And to their credit, they embargled it until we found out the name of the parents and were able to reach them. In any event, I'm just saying that you did suggest that a fourteen million was out of the ballpark. How do we know? Because we haven't had any plans for it. So, you know, this is, it's, it's done. And there's one thing that I wanna kinda add, 'cause I, I know that I'm kinda non-persona grata at this particular event. I think that the best thing I'd like to ask Commissioner Borgeson is that you do have, ask that I be replaced with the Mr. Yanni group, maybe have Claire step in my place, 'cause I'm, I'm out of step with what's taking place here, and I don't think it's useful for me to sit there and defend my position any further. So, thanks. I'll, I'll notify him as well.
There's a motion to second, you ready?
There's a motion to second for that, that's for sure.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Duda, I am sorry.
With apologies, I'll try to be brief, but basically, what we're looking at here is, long-term, do we wanna be at Forty Second or downtown? I mean, that's, that's really what this is about. And now, we're being told that, well, we'll have one or two courtrooms out at Forty Second. Ten years ago, I, I shouldn't speak for Commissioner Borgeson, but I think if ten years ago you'd asked the two of us where we see juvenile justice going, we'd have been there. We'd have said, "We want a new juvenile courthouse out at Forty Second, next to the Youth Center." But, as the process has gone along and we have found how expensive that is, how there is not enough room for that, how we would have to tear other buildings down and move people out and find new places for them, it evolved to that there isn't room out there. Now, if you're just gonna put one juvenile courtroom out there and we have five here, then common sense says to me that most of the kids are still gonna have to be shackled to be brought down to see their judges.
They're not.
If we have five judges here and juveniles out there, how, how are you gonna get the kids to the judge?
You get the judges to stop being spoiled brats and get in their cars and drive there, and they have separate court, they don't need separate courtrooms either. They don't need all that separate stuff. Ever been to a cattle call up in that courtroom? It's outrageous, outrageous the way that they operate. They should be ashamed of themselves, and I'm glad it's starting to change.
Commissioner Boyle?
That's my opinion.
I, I said what I'm gonna say.
So, it, it's not gonna happen, Claire, don't worry about it.
Thank you.
With that, clerk?
Yeah. You're on, you're on the ball.
Motion fails. Commissioner Boyle and Kavanaugh voting yes, all their commissioners voting no.
We'll go back to item four. Item four is citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments on an item not discussed on the Douglas County Board's agenda? Not discussed.
This relates to county governance, is that correct?
It's an item county-related, not discussed.
Five oh one five Lafayette. Is this the part that's open, as it relates to county government?
Yes.
All right. I have a document, it's a copy of a resolution passed by you folks on June third, two thousand and fourteen. We, in the last few weeks, we've heard bantering around about there is no strategic plan. Excuse me, this document indicates otherwise. And we don't really need more philanthropy. We have reference in here to a lot of philanthropists. We have Tara Luna, we have FSG that got a contract, we have Sherwood, we have Peter Kiwitt, to name a few. Casey Kiwitt. And they talk about a steering committee. What is a steering committee for but to steer us to some kind of a strategic plan? Which involves a lot of outside philanthropic organizations from all across the country. It's all right in there, I, I don't wanna take your time. It's all right in there, I, I don't wanna take your time on that, because you've got copies of it, and the World Herald can certainly have a copy, or they can request it. He told me last week, don't talk to me if you don't have the document. Right here it is, folks, and you can look it up yourself. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Luis Jimenez, five eighteen North Fortieth Street. I come now as the chairman of the Campaign Committee for the Nebraska Democratic Party Black Caucus, and I would like to read a item that we're looking at. "We as Nebraskans for Justice call on governments which are affirming, commissioning, deputizing, impaneling, empowering, hiring, interdicting, interposing, jurifying, marshaling, massing, organizing, inswearing, unionizing, warranting, or in any way or by any means creating or raising a force, patrol, troop, or unit of justice, law enforcement, or peace officers to also in concomitantly impanel or swearing in a board, commission, or commis-suret of citizens to audit, to oversee, and/or to review the function or functioning and the performance of such force, patrol, troop, or unit for adherence to and compliance with the laws of the hierarchy of entities to whom accountable, laws regarding not only criminal justice, but equal justice and equal rights such as, but not limited to those guaranteed both or either explicitly and/or implicitly in the Constitution of the United States of America and the various amendments thereto. We also strongly suggest that, as necessary as such boards, commissions, and/or panels have become, they still remain pointless to the extent that they remain powerless. Such bodies must be of necessity, at the very least autonomous, but best independent and free of interference. They must have research and investigative discretion, open access, and liberty of publication. They cannot be muffled, stifled, nor censored, except for commonly accepted practices of defamation, libel, slander, and fair personnel procedures or processes. Areas of investigation under such a board's discretion ought to include interlia, excessive or injudicious use of force, blackmail, or extortion, embezzlement, or misappropriation of funds by law enforcement officers, racism, and/or bigotry, racial profiling, discriminatory practices, procedures, and/or processes, denial of protective services for whatever reason other than self-defense or self, or defense of a law-abiding third party, colluding, consorting, or racketeering with arsonist criminals, gunmen, muggers, murderers, rapists, smugglers, or thieves." Thank you.
Ian Wells.
Hello, Brian Smith, six five one six Emmett Street. Uh, I would like to make it known to the board in light of today's vote, um, that two of the members are currently under investigation for ethics violations with the Nebraska Accountability and Disclosures Commission. There's been a formal complaint filed against all four elected officials who serve on the private five oh one C three board set to manage this process. Um, there's also been a complaint filed with the Douglas County Clerk for contractual interest statement, uh, failure to, uh, failure to file that. So in light that the, uh, the two commissioners, Morgan and Borgeson, are serving on that five oh one C three, I would like to, uh, make it known that they are under an ethics investigation for failure to file properly, and I would like the, uh, the body, if any authority remains here, um, to, or in this particular instance, to investigate the proper, um, process for this, for asking those folks to either resign off of the board while this investigation is being held, or to, um, investigate whatever other alternatives, uh, might, might reside with this particular, uh, body. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, since a few people can't speak twice, this is just one very brief statement. And all I want to see currently is the stopping of the eminent domain. I think it's very important that, once again, just as Commissioner Boyle had reiterated, that we all take a look at alternatives. And it could be taken later, okay? But don't do eminent domain now, do it maybe two to three months from now, if there's, if we've exhausted every single possible alternative proposal. Because if it really turned out that that were the case, then a lot of us would say, well, okay. But until that happens, we should not be going forward with eminent domain, and that is what I say. And I still believe that the citizens of Omaha need to be voting on this. Thank you.
Leo Lewis again, forty-four thirty-nine Commercial Ave. I was at the last commission meeting, and there was a discussion about the totality of this project cost, roughing around a hundred and twenty million. Then there was a discussion about the Juvenile Justice Detention Center, or whatever that's gonna be, and that discussion turned towards the thirty-seven million of that facility being built, but I have not heard much more regards to the annex of the courthouse and the fact that the courthouse needed to expand. I'd like to know a little bit more about that, if anybody could speak to that particular issue, because I think it's getting swept under the rug a little bit with this juvenile justice conversation.
We can't, no, we can't talk during this, Leo, but you come to me and I will explain you.
Okay.
What you just follow up.
Thank you.
I know more than half of this board.
State your name again, sir. State your name again, sir.
Arnold Breslow, thank you. You guys came with a predetermined agenda that only the city council can go past, and that, that's a shame. You guys are all know the city, you know the importance of downtown to any city. You've been around the world, you've seen what can be done, we're not talking about people that haven't traveled. Saving part of the city when, when you don't have to take something is just, you should be ashamed of yourselves. And, you know, don't think that the people who stopped so much of the deconstruction of this city in the last ten years aren't out there and won't be here. And even if they're not here, they'll be at the ballot box. And I know you guys enjoy what you do, I would enjoy doing what you do. But still, you guys need to look in your souls, because there's ways to do this, whether it be downtown, whether it be out west, without taking a building. It's just wrong, and you know it in your hearts, and especially you, Mr. Kraft, you should be ashamed of yourself. Your family and you have grown up in this downtown.
Mr. Breslow, I'm gonna ask you to keep it not personal until the issue.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to you then. The way this meeting was run scared half the people that were up here, and you should look, when you put times down, be flexible, be human. These people aren't used to getting up here and talking in front of you. I had people up here that I was surprised they didn't wet their pants. I mean, you just can't be that rough, man, you know that, and if you don't, you need to talk to someone who can explain it to you. Thank you all for listening. I normally don't get up and say this, but this was really upsetting. By the time I left giving my speech, I was upset. Enough that I had to sit down and calm down, 'cause unfortunately, part of my heart doesn't belong to me. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arnie.
Ian Wells. With that, we, we would. No, not yet. With that, uh, we'll go to item G, which is human resources. Item one is weekly personnel report, and that is as presented. With that, there is need for executive session for one item, that's litigation, is there a motion to go into executive session for litigation?
I just wanna correct, it's not one item, it's three, but they're all litigation.
Okay. Still litigation.
All litigation.
Okay, there is a motion to go into executive session for litigation, is, is there a motion? There's a.
Shall move.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
I vote probably, no, I vote yes.
Motion passes, all commissioners voting yes.
And again, we're going into executive session for litigation.
Good.
I think I switched them all over. I think you're good. Yeah. I'm a little worried, because there are so many today.
Commissioner Boyle, are you a yes?